Testing.
Are we good, Haley?
Do you guys want another one of these? Do you guys need another microphone?
Guys, if we're not.
I think we can just.
Like everybody else.
Did you need a?
Nobody wants to hear. Nobody listens.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come to the June Planning Commission meeting. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. This is America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. The Constitution and justice hall.
Okay, we will start with the minutes from our May 29 meeting, which seems like it was just yesterday. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
Yes, I do. On the first page, at the bottom, not the last paragraph, but up a few lines. It says Lou Colagreco states that this project has been underway for approval for nearly over three decades. That can't be right. Okay. And then. On the page two, on the bottom of the page, it says something about the landscaping. And it says Griffiths questions the maintenance for the Viparion buffer. Is it if a tree is planted there dies? Who would fix it? And I don't, I can't see that it says who will. And then, I'm sorry. I just have learned the minutes are important. Um, I don't know what page it is now. One, two, three, four, page five, right in the middle. It says Melito wants to go against the legal definition. And I don't really think that's what I said, that I wanted to go against the legal definition. I was trying to work out what the definition was. It looks like I want to be illegal. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine. Any other comments, corrections?
I had one small comment. There is that one? Yeah, there we go. I had one small comment, and it's probably not very important. But there was in the May, in the 2022 conditional approval. There was an item 19 discussion of a fee. I think it was an error in the resolution. But that comment I made wasn't recorded. And I think if that was an error in the resolution, we probably need to have that written out and codified. So I just didn't see that in the minutes.
Any other comments? Well, I'm wondering if we should approve the minutes or wait to see a revised version. But we don't know what their changes were because Haley is going to take a look at them.
I would hold off on approving the minutes until such time as revisions are made and you have an opportunity to review them.
Okay, sounds good. We'll be able to table that for next meeting. So we move to our engineer's report. Did anybody have any comments or questions for our engineer? Yep. Okay. Then we will move straight to new business zoning hearing board application for 140 Hill Church Road.
I can provide a little context for you on this one. This is a zoning hearing application for construction of a residential home. There is an existing home that is on the property, but the majority, if not all, the property is now in the flood plain. So as a result, they have to get relief in order to construct a home. The Board of Supervisors had voted in favor of opposing the application unless there could be some reasonable conditions worked out as to the construction of the home. The existing home hasn't been lived in in quite some time. There is a pool there as well that's now overgrown, but it does exist in a lower level, in a lower section of the property. There is at least one outbuilding that is still standing and a driveway that is somewhat overgrown, but somewhat maintained at the same time. So that is the background on this particular application. They do want to construct a home for themselves. The applicant is not a flipper or a developer. They're folks that want to live there themselves. It's about a 3,000 square foot footprint that they want for that home. So a fairly large footprint. There does appear to be the need to look at a few other things, including the fact that the engineer has identified that there are hydric soils on the site. So even outside of the wetland areas that have been designated on the site, there are hydric soils throughout most of the site. So this is before you for a recommendation for against or no recommendation. Or if you have any reasonable conditions that you would like to propose, we would certainly take those back to the board as well.
Are there, is there a representative from the applicant here by any chance? Okay.
I will note that the applicant is coming in to meet with staff next week and to talk through some of the issues that we've raised here. There appears to be a fair amount of engineering that still needs to happen to, to work out exactly what's going to happen here.
Did they figure out septic?
They figured out, well, they think they have figured out septic. They think they have figured out a way to raise the driveway and get the home out of the flood area so that they'd be at least a foot or two above flood elevation. All the utilities would be above flood elevation. But there's a lot to be worked through still.
Are there any safety concerns being, you know, I mean, saying something that might eventually flood?
So the township manager actually raised the same issues that you're raising right now and did suggest that as a, if there were to be a series of conditions that were acceptable to the township, one of those would include a recognition that there is a chance that first responders could not get to the home in the event of a flood.
And so just to be clear, the whole property is in the flood hazard district. And so they technically, according to our ordinance, should not be able to build anything at all. So that lot should not, according to our ordinance, is not developable.
That's, that's correct. So that's why they're asking for the relief. This property had not been in that, in that area until the most recent amendments to the FEMA maps. So it is something that happened relatively recently. And because there is a pre-existing home there, it would be a non-conforming use. There is a question of abandonment. I'm not going to get into the legalese of it here, but there are some, you know, some questions about abandonment and whether or not the previous use has been abandoned, given the fact the home has not been occupied in some time.
I, I had some kind of technical questions that I think the engineer probably could have answered, but maybe somebody here can. But there was some description of how the flood elevation was set, which was kind of technical, and I didn't really understand. And it sounded like it was sort of a guess. And.
An educated one.
Yeah, an educated guess. And I guess I just wanted to get somebody's opinion on whether that's a reasonable flood elevation that they're using as their assumption.
It's a very good question. That's one of the reasons that we're meeting with the applicant next week.
And just to build on that point, the utilities are described as being, I believe, less than a foot above the elevation that's assumed to be correct. I've actually done a visit to, I drove past it and looked at it. And the entire property that's moved back currently is proposed 40 feet from the cartway. It's going to be sitting squarely in the flood plain. So it's going to have to be elevated by several feet. And I candidly, I, I mean, I don't want to be negative at all, but I don't know how you can approve a zoning variance of this magnitude without understanding a little bit of the engineering of how the home is actually going to be lifted up and out of the flood plain, because it's Australia, isn't it? It's several feet.
You, again, another reason we're meeting with the applicant. And same thing with the driveway and fill, quote unquote, with the driveway. What does that look like? Piping under the driveway or ballast under the driveway to allow for water to flow through instead of creating that kind of a dam condition? There's a number of questions that have been raised that need to be discussed.
I think the other thing that struck me looking at the site is septic brought up earlier, how on earth they're going to get, even with the sand mound there. I think we'd need to see Chester County sanctuary people come in and take a look at that. And I don't know if all this is taking a look at it, but.
That, if, to the extent it hasn't already happened, that would absolutely be a condition. For some reason, I think there may be some approvals already out there, but.
There was wording to that effect in the documents.
But we need to see it.
Yeah, yeah, it seems a bit incredulous.
It's, it's interesting.
They said they had already gotten a septic permit.
That's right.
And so, like, that indicates approval from the county.
It does. Yeah, I just haven't seen it. I haven't seen the physical document.
Yeah.
I have a few comments. I don't know distances. Does it, do you have any idea how far from Stony Run? How many feet from Stony Run the house is planned on being built?
I do not.
It's about 100 yards, Elaine.
100 yards is 300.
300 feet, roughly, at least it.
Okay, so. So the state chapter 102 says that for an except for a high quality stream, you have to stay 150 feet away. And that you have to reforest up to 50 feet from the stream. But our zoning, so this is 150 feet away. Is that what you're saying? You think? I don't know.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay. Our zoning says that the Viparion buffer is 100 feet plus including any hydric soils. And as you said, this is all height, almost all hydric soil. BO is a hydric soil. So really, the, the whole plot is in a Viparion buffer.
Potentially it is, yes. They could refute, as we've discussed before, the hydric soil with actual tests of the soil. Nevertheless, that's the, that is the position.
Right, and it's a, I've been past the property too. And it's like an indentation. It almost looks, it looks like a pond could be there, you know? It's, it's not flat land. It's low land, how to put it. So I would, well, I don't know. BO is hydric soil. The others, the Reddingtons are partially hydric. Would you have to test the BO soil also?
You would.
Okay. Sorry. And then the other thing, wetlands need a buffer too. And so if this is all wetland, do we even have to go further out?
They have a wetland designation on the plan. It was very difficult to see on the version that we have. They have since provided a much more graphic view of the wetlands that have been designated on the property. But nevertheless.
Yeah, I think you have to be 50 feet from any wetlands. So I couldn't tell distances, but all that has to be taken into consideration.
And all, all would require variances if they were going to move.
Right, and then there would be a whole lot more variances that they would need. Yes.
What's the definition of a variance while we were trying to?
There has to be a hardship. And whether, there's two levels of hardship. One is for, I'll call them dimensional and quasi-dimensional variances. That's a lower burden of proof or a lower burden of hardship. Those are things, if you think about number of parking spaces, setbacks wouldn't be included within. Then there's a higher hardship, which is, or a higher burden, which is a use variance. Here, the use is a permitted use in the overlay, in the, I'll call it the underlying zoning district. However, when you have this flood plain zone that you're dealing with, it, the use becomes a little bit questionable. So if the use was abandoned, for example, it could potentially end up being a use variance request as well.
So it's not a dimensional variance, the use variance?
It could potentially be.
So I would imagine there are other houses that are in, like, you know, I have, I've been here 400 years.
Absolutely. The existing home is, is one of those.
And do we know if the existing home floods?
According to the applicant, it has never flooded. To their knowledge. Again, they've only owned the property the last.
Because they want to put an addition onto it, but if they just.
They want to, the home, the existing home, if you have seen the plan, it's very close to the road. It's almost like into the right of way. So the proposal is to move the home back, get it out of the right of way area, make a usable front yard, at least in the applicant's eyes. But not go, not, they're actually asking for a variance so as not to have to put the house all the way back to meet the front yard setback. Correct, they're building, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. They want to take down this house, raise it completely and build a new home.
So did they buy the land knowing that it was less expensive because it was all flood plain?
I, I don't know.
I mean, is it a new property or?
No, they, they've owned it for the better part of 10 years, I believe.
I don't think so.
I think it's eight to 10 years.
I don't, I don't remember. I thought it was less, but I don't remember.
Okay, I thought it was in the teens. I may be wrong on that, but I believe they bought it in the teens.
I think the flood plain maps changed in 2017.
Correct.
I have a, I did a map of the flood plain just to see that, that same question someone asked. Are there other houses in, in the, in the flood plain? And, and they really aren't. They're all outside of the flood plain. Did a map if anyone wants to look at it. The natural flood hazard permit, it's called.
I, I was just saying that there are lots of, having lived in one prior to the house I live now along in Westminster town, there are a lot of houses that, you know, were built 100 years ago that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's not living, it's not enjoyable living in a flood ground house.
No.
My personal experience.
Especially when, when you try to get insurance.
Yeah, yes, that's, yes.
It's just sort of like, makes me wonder, like, should we be perpetuating that? Because we know it's a bad idea. We like to be good neighbors because they own the property. They want to be able to do something with it. But we seem to be of the opinion that it might not be the best idea.
But they could do something with existing ones.
They could potentially do something with the existing house. I think it would be a challenge and there would still be legal issues to deal with perhaps. That and because it hasn't been used for so long as a, as a home. So it's been not abandoned, but as vacant. So there are some legal arguments to suggest that once you don't use something and don't maintain it for a long period of time, that perhaps that use has been abandoned. If so, then the overlay district would suggest that they are no longer permitted to have a residence there. Now, again, that's a legal argument. I'm not weighing in on it one way or the other. But there are challenges with this property overall.
I guess.
Not right now, no.
I'd just like to say something. One more thing is that this would be a nice property to put into some kind of conservation. It's right along the creek. It's got woodlands. Could be, put a nice forested buffer in there or something like that. Maybe some, maybe they could get some money for, for the land.
Potentially.
I, I don't, I don't. I don't know that it's a good idea to promote building, requesting this variance. I mean, I, I do want to help our neighbors and be able to, you know, build on their land, but it just seems, I don't know if responsible is the right word, but a good idea to have them build in a potentially hazardous area on many, for many different reasons.
So I think you're, what I am hearing is a viewpoint of the planning commission that is very similar to that of what the boards was, which is, we really don't think this is a good idea. We want to hear a little bit more from the applicant in terms of details, engineering, and how this could possibly work from a mitigation standpoint. Is this base flood elevation even accurate? Can the house be raised further up perhaps? But all of those things are, are things that we're going to ask the applicant. And then we can bring that information back to you next meeting. I believe that the applicant has rescheduled to July 17th. So there would be an opportunity for additional comment or a decision or recommendation by this board before the zoning hearing board, correct? Okay.
What do you all think? Does that sound reasonable to? I, I mean, at this point, we don't need to pass on any comments because the zoning hearing, we'll have another meeting before the zoning hearing.
That's correct.
So.
But I get the general gist of what's going on.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. Do we have any public comment on that? So any hearing board application? Before, before we move on? Hearing none. We can move on to our old business, which is the draft data center ordinance, second review. So our diligent township solicitor has been busy preparing a new version of the data center ordinance that we reviewed last time that has some significant changes that reflect a lot of the things that we talked about last time. So thank you for that. Maybe we should start with any overall comments before we get, get into the specific red lines. And I think last time we didn't make it through the whole thing.
That is correct.
So we could pick up at, well, I guess we, we kind of, because there's been so many changes, we kind of do need to start over.
Here, last week, or last, whenever it was, last meeting, I was in here. I apologize. So, and I hate to go back, but. So we're creating a new zoning ordinance for data centers. And this came up because someone thought they might want a data center two years ago?
No, this came up because more recently, a property owner came forward and suggested that they would like a data center in the IMU district. So rather than have a developer or applicant proposed ordinance, we're getting out ahead of it in the IMU district. The backdrop is that the IMU district by, by incorporation of the, the industrial standards has a catchall provision that would provide for any uses that aren't provided, other where, or any other uses that are not available otherwise in the township would go in this district. So because of that, I think we need to get ahead of it and put some parameters around data, data centers in general. So that's what this is. It's not a brand new zoning overlay district. It's part of what would be in the IMU district. But these conditions would be applied specifically to data centers. And the use itself would be by conditional use, which would give the opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to put additional conditions on the use, provided they're reasonable. And this board could make recommendations to that effect as well. So that was the backdrop we were working with. We took some of the areas surrounding data center ordinances, cobbled some things together, used some best practices, came forward with the draft that we had proposed for consideration by this board, really for review, not consideration, but review. We got about two thirds of the way through. We got to the decibel, you know, the sound study provisions and didn't get further. So that's where we are right now. The comments that you see in red line are both from this board and the individual supervisors as well. So we incorporated both of those things.
A planner and did our other consultants review this?
Thanks to the direction of the township manager. We do have Roger here, who is a engineer who is specific for this project. And Michelle Adams is also reviewing this ordinance.
What about our planner? Don't we have a planner?
Rick, Rick Traly, you mean, Rick, Rick is also reviewing the ordinance, yes.
So have they said anything?
We're getting through your comments and then we're sending it back to these folks.
I just feel my comments, I mean, I don't, I just don't really feel qualified to do this. I, I don't, there's so many things I've been reading about and things people are sending to me about data ordinances that could happen. I just can't, I just don't feel like that we can sit here and, and decide what the ordinance should look like when I haven't, I've, I have, I don't know what could possibly happen. Like on, on, for instance, on the, the ordinance that you did write, I have it written up, some of the questions. I'm sorry, you gave me your own, a new copy, and so I don't have my written on copy. Well. On the next to last pages, the third page back, it's, my comments start, like, for instance, air pollution controls, visible emissions. Well, do these, do these data centers usually have visible emissions? I mean, I don't, I don't even know. And do they have particulate vaporous gaseous emissions? Do they have hazardous air emissions? I have the same question. Do they usually have this? And it goes on until the next page. And then I'm saying, well, what else might they have? So I, I don't, I just feel like we'll miss something.
I had the same, the same thought, Elena, without jumping ahead and getting into those details. Can you describe where some of these specifics came from? And kind of how you arrived at the numbers that you did and the things that are being regulated?
Sure, we took a look at surrounding communities. There were a couple of very recently adopted data center ordinances. We polled them, figured if there were differences between them. We looked at those differences to see kind of where the, where the range was, if you will, especially when it came to sound, sounds, of course, a big piece of this. The emissions, that part came about because of comments that the Board of Supervisors individually had made and had thought that it perhaps would be good again to get out ahead of something if there were a diesel generator or something that could perhaps emit something that we get out ahead of it. And these, these regulations that are in here all refer back to either state or federal regulations, which really preempt whatever we would do locally anyway. So they're more of a, a requirement that the applicant or the data center would, would, in fact, adhere to those standards. When you get that, when we look at the bulk standards, the dimensional standards, heights, things like that, we took an approach of, well, this is what the maximum is in some of these places. And that's where we had the comments that came through last week about limiting heights, increasing setbacks, de-increasing or eliminating having parking inside of setbacks, those types of things. So that's how we, I hope that answers your question.
I think so. It's, it sounds though that we didn't talk to any municipalities who have had a data center come into their community and to sort of understand how that ordinance worked out in real life. And maybe if there's anything they wanted to change in the future.
We talked, I talked to some managers. One in particular, that there is a data center, but they didn't have a data center ordinance to address the data center itself. So it was more about their experience with what it was and what it is like today. And you're right, there are, we didn't talk to more recent data center ordinance places where they have a data center ordinance. There, there really are not many in this part of Pennsylvania, where they had an ordinance that was specific to a data center. And then the data center came in after that ordinance. Many places, they had these catchall provisions and they just kind of came in.
I'm curious what you heard from the municipal manager that, whose community just recently got a data center.
Not recently got a data center.
Not recently.
No, no, they, this was the better part of a decade ago. And it, they didn't have an ordinance that addressed it, but they've been comfortable with what they have. It's a somewhat unique situation.
So just picking off on that, it strikes me doing a little bit of background research. Most of these data centers are in deserts or in lowly populated areas. As far as I can see, there are relatively few in populated areas or near suburban communities like ours. Was that consistent with your findings when you were doing the background research, Joe?
It's consistent with some of it, yes, but we're, we're. It's consistent with some of it, yes, but what we're seeing is along especially the eastern seaboard, there's more and more popping up around the Washington DC area. Um so more populated areas. Um. You may have recently seen some articles where I think it was Google that's going to spend twenty billion dollars on data centers in Pennsylvania. Um so they are coming into more populated areas, but this is more of a a front edge, if you will, of it. And and again, I think it's really important for the community to get out ahead of something like this and put the standards in place um and put the process in place. So um at least there's some structure around if somebody were to come through.
But there's also data centers that are co-located with office buildings.
Oh, gosh.
Correct?
Yeah.
So like I'm kind of wondering, would it be worthwhile to have different standards for different types of data centers?
It perhaps it would be, and if you're, there there are based on square footage, right, basically how many servers you can get into the thing. Um they have different requirements, different tier levels um in different service areas. Um. What I think um the direction that I had been given by individual board members um is to look at this from a big picture, a more modern data center, which would be what they call now a tier four data center. Um and then we incorporated that tiering structure into this ordinance. There's a tier five structure as well. I think somebody uh mentioned it last meeting um that takes into consideration some other environmental factors. Um but that tier five is like a, it's not really a tier, it really doesn't exist. It does exist, but it doesn't exist. It's kind of a strange system. It's really one through four. One being the worst, four being the best in terms of the operation of the center itself.
And how desirable it is, I guess, for like storing data?
Yes, because you know, the the more, the higher the tier level, the more sophisticated um operation would want their data stored there. It's it's really a matter of how often it would go down.
Yeah.
And the redundancy in the center.
Do you think we're putting the cart or the horse in that maybe we should be listening to um the people that are reviewing it, like Michelle Adams and the other person and taking that information to?
I think what
I feel like I don't.
I think what we were doing is getting the bulk standards worked out, some of that kind of stuff. And then more that more of the technical information, we would definitely rely on on Roger and Michelle um to take a look at this and review, but I think that was really the the take from what my directions were.
So one of the comments, and it was recorded in the minutes of the last meeting, was that it struck us that the proposed wording at that time was a little bit less stringent than actually the IMU ordinance itself.
Yes.
Um and I haven't compared them, you know, I haven't had the time to do that, uh but as you've revised this, have you tried to kind of make sure those things are sort of of equivalent stringency?
From the, I'll call them the bulk standards, the and and really where I'm going with that is height. Um read the the um removal of forest. Um yes, we've gone back to those standard, the impervious coverage. Those standards, we kind of matched up more with the IMU district, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
And and frankly, we need to go through it one more time. We wanted to get through it in full uh before this planning commission. Um and then come back with a kind of a cleaner version of it so that the red lines aren't all over the place.
Are we approving something?
No, you're making, you are you are making suggestions as a body on this draft ordinance, then it will be coming forward for a recommendation.
Yeah, so I I think we're still waiting on some input from our planner and from.
Absolutely.
It's hard to make a comment on something that you I don't know anything about data centers.
Yeah, I I guess that's, we all feel that way. Um. And so it's scary that we're going to make an ordinance or or okay, an ordinance when we really don't know that much about it. Um I and I would, if I want to make the best ordinance possible, you know, the strongest ordinance, the safest for the residents in terms of all these problems that we're we're at the highest standard here. And so I thought of Leeds. Um and I see you you put in what um Chris mentioned about the institute tier four standards. Is that related to Leeds or does Leeds have any and any standards for data centers?
These are not Leeds standards, they're different standards. Um and there are some lead standards that could be incorporated into the construction generally of a data center, just like any other building.
Yeah, well, I would, yeah, I would like to see if we're going to make an ordinance that we can make it as strong as possible, so we look into all those different situations. Um there are, there have been many things floating around, people doing a lot of research on this. Um. And I think they've had all kinds of good ideas and I I'd kind of like to hear from them. Like I have a uh a uh sheet here from East Vincent Advocacy that just goes into many things that I think that we need to incorporate into the ordinance. I don't know when the right time to do that is, but um I think it's all need to needs to be brought together.
Is there a a data center guru in the area, someone who knows all aspects of a data center, how it's built? What are the emissions, what are particulates are getting into the air, anything like that?
There.
I think we're, we're not, he, nobody's gonna be comfortable till we can get the answer that we're really looking for. I don't think that's happened.
So we're hoping that some of those questions can be answered by Roger and Michelle. Other, there there are um if you want to call them data center gurus out there, uh most of them work for the data center companies. Um there are a few on the other side of that fence too, um and somewhere in between is probably the reality of what's happening. Um and it's, but it's, it is hard, especially right now, what's happening is a lot of um companies are coming forward and sending their team um to meetings like this um in order to kind of guide and lead the discussion. Uh we again felt that it would be more appropriate for for us to get out in front of that um for all of the reasons that have been mentioned up here.
I think it's great to get out in front of it and have a super tight ordinance that addresses everything, but we just want to make sure as planning commission and uh residents and neighbors that it's the best ways that we're, you know, making the best choices. And it's hard to do that if we we don't know what we're doing. Like I, I just feel like we need to have more information.
So the follow up on the one question, my firm has uh a number of my colleagues in the Virginia area that have consulted both for and against data centers, working for municipalities and for and I'll be relying on them for some of the information. My background is more municipal engineering and the site work side of things. But I think what we're looking for and what Joe was explaining a little bit with you don't have to be the data center expert, but the questions we're asking you regarding setbacks, height, noise, like you want, do you want to see it, do you want to hear it, do you, you want to know it's there? You give us those parameters that work with the underlying zoning and then we can tailor that. You know, tailor the ordinance to that to make sure that it it meets your wishes and still works for everyone. So, you know, that's that's our position in this, and then we'll tell you the impacts of that. Right?
I'm sorry, I'm I'm Nicole Pegan.
Roger Phillips.
I miss him. Are you the engineer?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I wasn't here last meeting. Okay.
So knowing that um why don't we just start going through it um number by number? And uh if anybody has any comments on each number, does that sound okay? So we can sort of get it all out there? Okay, um does anybody have any comments on number one, data center use?
Do um?
Okay. Number two definitions.
I did have a question, it's not so much a comment, it's a question. Um it's under, it's under data center equipment. Um last paragraph, DCE shall be accessory to the data center and be located in the same tract or assemblage of adjacent parcels. I thought by definition, an accessory had to be on the same tract as the primary structure. It's a bit picky, but.
We we can change that, it's just the intent there and is to make sure that everything is adjacent, right? The same tract of land, so but yes, we can, we can make that change.
And then I wanted to ask um some on the data center accessory uses, some of them are pretty significant accessory uses, pump stations, electrical substations. Um. I'm wondering, like, to what extent do we need supplemental use standards for any of those?
So a lot of these data centers, as you know, use a tremendous amount of electricity, a tremendous amount of water for cooling purposes. Uh. They will build their own pumping station or get their own withdrawal permit from a river or build their own substation so they're not draining the power grid for the the host community. So tho- those things would typically go ahead of that without without those being defined. They would take the infrastructure that's existing and it probably wouldn't be sufficient or it would put that that extra strain on it.
Right, so I understand that, but like you know, if um you know, there's a data center and they say, okay, we we need an accessory use of uh an electrical substation and um I didn't read anything in this ordinance aside from don't put it between the building and the the right of way that would like provide for any screening of those things or like what is that? Like, not that we want to control the aesthetics of an electrical substation, but like that's a big thing and like I feel like typically you would see like there's, are there fencing requirements or there's signage requirements or something like that for for like each of these specific accessory uses.
Or do they get tied into existing ordinance?
They would be tied into existing ordinances. Um the underlying zoning would still apply, so there are maybe other standards throughout the IMU district. The other thing to keep in mind is is again, it's really important to keep in mind that this is all by conditional use. So any of those things that are not specifically addressed like that um could be conditions of approval that the board um would require. So that's another thing that that we are balancing here is um the the bulkiness or the complexity of an ordinance versus a little more simplistic and conditions that can be applied. You want to try to, in my opinion, try to balance those two.
Right. So like, let's just say, for example, energy generation facility is a data center wants to build a solar field next to it as an accessory to the data center. We don't have supplemental use standards for that scale of solar development. So like, I I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at, like, are there any of those things that you think if we were to adopt this ordinance that we should also think about looking at developing supplemental use standards for?
We certainly could develop supplemental supplemental use standards. Um. It would be tough to develop them for every single
Yeah.
potential accessory structure or use. Um but for example, you know, with uh we have in here already that generators need to be blocked off, enclosed as much as possible. Um we could have similar requirements for substations or what have you. I think again, those more, I'll call them aesthetic related things are best handled um in conditional use standards um or requirements. But we can certainly put guidelines, you know, put the the guide rails, I could say, um in the ordinance. And they're really salvo requirements when it comes down to it too. That's really where you address those types of things too, in my opinion.
And the solar aspect. The solar aspect of that would be quite minimal on a data center also because of the power draws.
Yeah.
I'm just taking that one step further. I don't know if it's in the ordinance, I it's not all in my head at all. Um. But I've I've read many places that um, so these supplemental uses like electricity, they have, they need a lot of electricity and usually they have to build a a whole new grid or something or so how how is, is this ordinance in any way able to protect the residents against um uh against all of a sudden not having power because the the amount is, you know, the needs are high at this point and who gets the uh electricity, the data center or the residents, that kind of thing?
There are other regulations dealing with that that are regulatory, federal and state regulatory level um that have been put in place specifically to address those types of things. Um we can certainly put in here things like we have already with water and sewer that suggest that if there need to be water or sewer improvements, that those need to be made by the I'll call it landowner or data center and at their cost, not at the cost of the residents. Um the same thread kind of flows through with the power grid and things like that. I I've heard some of the similar um kind of, I'll call them horror stories where um the grid improvements have been um the costs have been allegedly borne by the taxpayer as opposed to the data center. That doesn't happen here.
I mean, so there is something in here that would stop that.
That hasn't happened in Pennsylvania for
Oh.
Uh that doesn't happen in Pennsylvania with their grid right now.
But we need to prevent it from happening.
We can certainly yeah, it, right, it's, that's right, it's it's PUC regulated.
Yeah, so the power grid's PUC regulated at the state level and they they handle that. And just like you would handle your own wastewater needs here as a local community, as a local government, the PUC handles the electrical grids and at that level. They would have to come in, when they get, when they call Pico to get their service permit, uh it would all go through the PUC and the PUC would analyze that.
Are you kind of wondering, like, could this necessitate needing to build new transmission lines and transmission corridors?
It may.
Yeah.
Very well, may, yeah. For sure.
And some of them build their own new power plants inside, either a little nuclear plant or whatever.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of power that's needed and some of those power plants are dangerous too, you know, or.
Yeah, if I I would venture to guess that if one were to want to open here, that they wouldn't be able to work off of the existing infrastructure of the power grid.
Right.
So there would be, you know, it would
Something.
There could be something between here and Limerick that would be constructed directly to them.
Uh do we have an ordinance right now about cell towers?
We do.
Okay, so would that overrule anybody who was trying to put a data center in and saying, let's use this piece of land to throw up a tower as well? No, that that would be, they're actually in this ordinance as well, it talks about potential cell tower as an accessory use. Um but there is also, again, regulations that deal at a state level with cell towers and all we can and cannot do um as well as co-locations on those towers.
It's not just electricity, either it's water, they use an incredible amount of water.
Yes.
And uh yeah, so I guess what I'm asking is that's something we need, we can't, that we can put in the ordinance to protect ourselves or should put in the ordinance. It's it's kind of all that stuff that what do we need to look at and be careful of.
And and it also seems like the technology is like increasing and just getting better every day. Like I was just reading about a data center that used entirely like recirculated wastewater. And so they weren't drawing water from a river or even from like a water treatment plant. And so like the extent that we can incentivize some of those things um before they just become common practice that everybody does. I think I think it would be great to be able to incentivize some of these lead-related practices or some of the things that we're particularly concerned about, whether it's like all the diesel that's being used for the backup um backup power, the water draws, the sound attenuation.
So that can be included in this ordinance?
Some of it can be, yes, for sure, for sure. There there's a point you, we all have to keep in mind that there is a tipping point um where if the ordinance is so tight, so restrictive, it becomes prohibitive. Um and if you do, if you go past that line, and nobody knows exactly where that line is. Um but if you go past that line, um then you have opened yourself up for a challenge. And if you open yourself up for that challenge, then it could perhaps go anywhere in the township as opposed to very specific locations.
So are there ways that you can put incentives in that?
Right.
Yes.
Certain ways?
Yes.
And is that in the ordinance or is that in some other?
There are, so what's become more popular recently, it's it's kind of a a bit of an oddity in Pennsylvania because of the way that we view zoning overall legally. But they call them community benefits agreements um that happen with data centers. You see them more in urban areas, um but they also are where large infrastructure is being proposed. And then in those CBAs are a lot of those benefits that you're talking about or obligations to do things that are environmentally conscious. Um provide infrastructure perhaps for schools or whatever it may be. I mean, you can, it basically the, the, there's a lot of flexibility in those ordinances uh or in those agreements, excuse me. Um. I do get concerned with contract zoning at some point. Um but those agreements are now out there, they've been in place in Pennsylvania communities, so I think that's one avenue. Um certainly, some of those standards and bonuses and things of that nature can go into the ordinance as well, provided they're viewed as if you do A, you get this benefit of B. if you do A, you get this benefit of B and not just that you need to do this or else you can't do the, you can't build it at all.
What about a like a use bonus, like you can do a data center in this zone if you do X, Y, and Z. Or like maybe we've got it two classes of data centers, the small one and the big one. And um if you want to do the big one, you've got to do all of these things. Like, could that be possible?
We we kind of have that in there a little bit already and and I know it's a concept that not everybody is perhaps on board with, but that T O T D R piece um is kind of what you're talking about, but just with TDRs where the buildings are limited to three hundred thousand square feet. Uh and the way that you can expand upon that footprint is by way of TDRs.
Right.
So yes, you could do something else. You could put bonuses in a if you if you provide this much reforestation, if you provide a park, if you provide whatever it may be, then you get these bonuses for the use or or in- increased size and infrastructure.
Right, but I I I guess I'm saying change it a little bit and the TDR piece is fine. And and so maybe like, I I don't know what the square footage differentiation between the little data center and the big data s- data center would be. But maybe the um the TDR piece is associated with the big data center at and um as are the various green standards we've been talking about.
They could do that.
Rick it.
Oh, I have a question um with um the noise and I know there's.
Are are we still on the uh?
Sorry.
Sorry, uh we will get there.
Okay.
We will get there. Did you have something you wanted to say, Chris?
No, no.
Okay. All right, um so we're still on the definitions or yes. So um wait, hold on. No, we're not. We're not on the definitions. We're in area and bulk regulations unless anybody else has anything on definitions. Okay, all right, area and bulk. So the minimum tract size has stayed twenty acres from last time. But um the maximum impervious coverage is now fifty-five percent of the tract area, which is the same as the IMU district. Um same, the building coverage thirty-five percent of the tract area, which is same as the IMU district. And the height is sixty feet, which is the same as the IMU district.
But would there be any reason to have any of that?
If it ends up, I didn't want to take it out entirely, but what this section does is reference the underlying bulk standards and regulations. So to the extent that they're the same, they would come out, but I didn't want to eliminate it and have people think that we had totally just gotten rid of them. So the track size is different. Um it's larger, of course, uh but the tracked area uh impervious coverage rather uh maximum building coverage and building height, they could come out.
I don't keep them in.
Yes, right. So they're the same. That's all I'm saying.
I can keep them in.
Okay.
Um so then the maximum building size is three hundred thousand square feet. Um which could be increased to the total amount that you could get on that twenty acre or or on the the size parcel. Using thirty-five percent of the tract area for the building. So for the unnamed parcel that this could occur on. Just bring up my calculator. Maybe somebody else did the math, what the maximum building size could be if they use the TDRs.
Well, yeah, that's just an example. It's not the, you know, it's just one of a a possible example.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on the TDR aspect here. We're saying this building could be three hundred thousand square feet. And say somebody wants to put five hundred thousand. Um we're talking about two hundred thousand square feet extra or larger.
Yes.
And we're talking about TDRs. I'm I'm assuming, you know, logically that a larger building would have more of the things that might be considered a nuisance, more water usage, more sound, more visible. Putting a park in doesn't alleviate those things. There would have to be, to me, more things that would like block that view or alleviate that sound or recycle the water. Things like those are the bonus or the uh you like you said bonus, yeah. Not just, you know, open space three miles away.
Yeah.
Doesn't do anything for the people who live right there.
I think on a ninety-five acre parcel, the maximum size, if you used all the TDRs, could be one point four million square feet. I believe it.
I think you're, I think that's close.
Yeah.
Thirty-five percent, I, you know, I think you're close.
Yeah. So a question is, is that okay? And um.
So you're saying it can go from three hundred thousand square feet to one point four million using TDR?
The maximum, what we did is we actually are becoming more stringent in the regulation here. The maximum building coverage right now in your IMU district is thirty-five percent of the track size. What we have said is we're capping the building size at three hundred thousand square feet, even if you have a hundred acres. And the only way that you can go over the three hundred thousand square feet is if you are able to acquire TDRs. And at a rate of one TDR per roughly four hundred or four thousand square feet, you can expand the building to the maximum of the thirty-five percent. So it's not over and above the thirty-five percent, to be clear. It's actually only three hundred thousand square feet, which is still a very large building. Um but the only way to go over that three hundred thousand square feet, even if you have the acreage that would support it, is with TDR use.
What was the number Rachel threw out? I just was curious.
One point four million.
Of?
Square feet.
On the Pennhurst property.
Oh, okay, that's the total.
If they wanted to max it out, but I think they want to do other things there, but I don't, I have no idea. So, I mean, to me, it feels like, like I I understand the argument for cashing out on the TDRs, but it does feel a little bit like like, to whose benefit is it and like to whose detriment is it? And I guess I personally would rather see something that was a little bit more of a combination of TDRs and um some design features that would attenuate the issues that we're concerned about.
So I I would agree with you, however. I'm stumped to actually come up with what design solution there could be to block out the site of a five-story building that could occupy seven and a half acres of space. Will have multiple generators the size of school buses. Um and fuel tankers rumbling back and forth. I I I'm just, I I lost to know in an environmentally sensitive area with this lot of population. What we could ask them to do to ameliorate that. It's laudable to try, but I'm trying to understand it.
Yeah.
You could put a limit, limit on it. I mean, when the TDRs are used in the residential zones, there's there's the sending TDRs and the receiving TDRs. And you have to follow both standards. So there could, is there a maximum here? Is there a receivable amount?
Well, we would set the receivable amount.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It can reset, they would set the receivable.
The receivable amount would be based on the property size. That's really how it's set. It could be something different, but the way that it's set right now is basically thirty-five percent of whatever that property is. Um that's the
So you already said that.
Yeah.
But we but we could say up to, i- it could be increased up to eight hundred thousand square feet with TDRs.
That we could put a limit. If the limit, what you just calculated is one point four, that's a big. That's a, that's going up three, six, nine, twelve, that's going to
Have we put that limit to stay what's acceptable or?
You you can recommend a limit, sure. Um i- if there's a collective agreement on what that limit should be, then it's it's, this is all what we're trying to flesh out is is what is that limit? What is the, you know, what is the opportunity? Again, right now in the IMU, if somebody came, if anybody came in and said, we want to build a, you know, a whatever it is there. Um it could be one point four-ish million square feet of that thing.
And this is where a professional, like somebody who knew the data center industry would be really helpful because like maybe there's different types of data data centers and if we set it at eight hundred thousand, the the people who develop the big data centers would be like, oh, I can't do anything with that. And maybe they'd challenge it and say it was arbitrary. And and then the small data centers, like that would be way too big for them. I'm just an example because I really don't know, but I I I guess I wonder, like, is there a way to figure out what would be a reasonable number aside from just setting something arbitrarily?
If you're looking, from from my understanding and what I have heard um from some people and I guess Roger, we can confirm this with your folks, a million square feet. That's the high end. Um that's what folks are looking for in this area to have something that's not just a regional, in other words, a smaller data center. Anything under that, I I don't think we need to worry about the low end, um so to speak, you know, the smaller size, uh because they could go smaller if they wanted to.
So I'm sorry, you're saying that most of the larger daters, data centers are a million.
I I don't know if most of them are, but that's the number that's thrown out there all the time and it's collecting, you from what I understand, it's not all one building necessarily, but a million square feet uh collectively uh of building size. Yeah.
And and that's very consistent with the reading I've done in preparation for this.
Yes.
I mean, I think we have to kind of get real. If we want to make it so difficult that it could be challenged, we could set it at five hundred thousand, but it will get challenged if somebody really wants to put a data center in because five hundred thousand doesn't get you anything in terms of data centers based on, at least my research, that's a million minimum.
On these tier fours.
Before they get out of bed in the morning.
Yeah, that's right.
So the setting it at three thousand, three hundred thousand square feet initially maximum is just kind of like, well, if you want to go bigger, you can using TDRs. You want them to use the TDRs. Is that what's going on here?
Basically, it's a line in the sand, absolutely. And the the question in front of us is, is TDRs the right vehicle to do it? Pair of the conversation we've just had. I think it's part of the solution. I'm just don't know what the other part of the solution is.
And and we had also could, just so that we're all clear, I I think that makes a lot of sense, that there may be other additional things. Um we had also uh proposed perhaps a facade um kind of condition or guide. Um we got some pushback from some of the individual supervisors on not doing that because of concerns that perhaps that would prohibit or impede sound attenuation um by using baffling or whatever it may be. We certainly can use those um those design standards, the facade standards that we um came up with as a as a guide um that could be imposed as a condition, a conditional use, provided that it made sense um to the user and to the township. Um but those are some of the things we did, we did prepare as well.
Let let's just suppose that we didn't have any more TDRs. They were used somewhere else and there were no TDRs available anywhere. Then it's set at three hundred thousand square feet and then can they say that's too difficult?
We would have to adjust the ordinance at that time.
So the the things that I wrote down for other things that once again, I don't know if these are feasible to do for a a data center, but are just like, you know, these articles that I've read and things I've been hearing. But if we were to do a combination of TDRs and other other types of green building practices or skip the TDRs completely. Incentives for wastewater harvesting and reuse, battery backup power instead of diesel generation. Renewable generation sources of at least a certain percent of their projected power usage. Geothermal cooling rather than water and thermally networked with adjacent buildings. I think I had heard about like them providing heat to the Veterans Center or something like.
Co-generation.
Right, um so and I'm sure there's lots of others too, like like the the um cooling and and backup power being inside the building. And anything else, like I I don't even know what the menu of options is for sound attenuation. But like, could we have some of those features be worth something in terms of additional square footage instead of just TDRs?
I think you could. I think some of those things make sense and this, we want to hear these things because that's what we want. Um Roger to be able to take back to his people and have the conversation about and say, hey, this is the list that we came up with here. Um are there alternatives? Are there others? Are are these feasible? Are they not? So that's part of the conversation, but until we have a handle on kind of what the what the local community wants through you, um we we can't really do that. And I know it's it it's like a chicken and egg thing. Well, we want to hear what the experts have to say before we say what we think should be. But I think really what we start with is you, we come back to the experts and then we can have a proposal based on those two things.
Yeah, I would. When it would come specifically to sound, the the numbers that are that are in here now just placeholders are relatively quiet, so you're small, you would want your small building to be quiet also, not just the larger building. So I don't know that that there would be a lot of incentives available for the sound because, you know, it it's the same. Battery battery power really is not efficient long term for these these sites. They have a certain amount of battery power. But the amount of power that these systems use couldn't add, that that allows them to switch safely to the generators is what the battery does without a loss. So so I don't know that 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 would be one that would would aid in any additional square footages or something.
Well, I'm I I'm not talking about like a lithium ion battery. I'm talking
No, I I fully understand that. But I've dealt with these a little bit and the and the amount of power that these things use still blow my mind.
Yeah.
And yeah, and the amount of water, so it's yeah, they're very complicated systems, obviously. Such as?
I don't know.
I mean
She's she's
For for incentives, for incentives. Uh I I like to keep it basic with just with just setbacks and and sound. Can you, I think you want this thing to be quiet no matter how big it is, right?
Right.
So.
Well, I I I would agree with that completely, but I do think there's a couple of other things that we could consider. One is water. Um I know some of the more modern facilities now use re- uh a recirculating system, which means it raises about five percent as opposed to a hundred percent, I mean, it's sucked in discharged. And the Schuylkill River probably doesn't actually enough water to cool one of these. Um we know that it can't cool Limerick, for example. The other thing is the traffic, you know, if we have one of these mega centers, um all those diesel generators need to be supplied with fuel, create big tankers. And is there something we could have in here talking about as part of the one million, one point four million square foot thing that there has to be an arterial road constructed from a major artery into the facility? It can't come up Pennhurst Road or the other small roads. And I don't see that anywhere here, but that seems to me, listening to public comment last time and just looking at from a common sense point of view, surely that has to be, it's not just a traffic study, that has to be kind of this is really important kind of thing.
Yeah, that that is a difficult ask for any type of development in general, um because you start getting into the off-site improvement uh requirements and we really can't require off-site improvements, even though oftentimes um applicants will agree to off-site improvements. So I think that's again, one of those things where you you don't, you can, perhaps it's not best put in the ordinance itself, but if this were to come forward in any meaningful way, there would be requirements, um you know, by way of conditional use approval that the applicant or developer would agree to. Traffic, I, traffic impacts, w- we we've heard from a number of folks is is an important piece. Um and from a traffic perspective, from what our uh the township's traffic engineer has said is that based on the number of people that work here and even with the the deliveries of uh blades or servers. or with the delivery of fuel and what have you, it's a very low impact use in terms of traffic. That doesn't mean that the construction's any easier. It's it's very, we all understand the construction is very difficult from a traffic perspective and from a heavy equipment perspective. What I have seen in other places is where there's an agreement by the developer of that particular large use like a data center to say, if we, you guys, Pinoni has a great program of of evaluating roads. We could say perhaps by conditional use, if you damage any of the roads and we can show that you damaged the roads and you have to repair them as a result of your heavy equipment or whatever it is, I've seen that in other communities. So there are ways to address some of the infrastructure, but not necessarily to make them improve the off-site infrastructure from a road perspective.
It just seems to me that if we're writing this ordinance to allow a huge data, you know, anything huge up in that area, there have to be, there has to be a way to get there that's reasonable. I mean, suppose the data center is built out in the middle of the desert. Well, they'll have to build a road from the closest highway to that data center. So maybe here they'll have to figure out to to they'll have to figure out a way to get in there. I mean, there are other roads that could be expanded without impacting any residents. There's a church road access going up there, but already they're already using that for Penhurst. Scary place.
The haunt, I think, is what we are calling it these days.
So, you know, just go improve that road and go up the road a little bit further to wherever they're going to build this data center. I realize it's off-site, but maybe they have to be aware of they're going to have to do some off-site improvements to get there.
And wasn't it the last version of the ordinance had something in there that was like, if you want to build a data center, you have to have access to it from an arterial or a collector street? And that that got taken out.
That's that's out, yes.
Yeah.
And why was that? That was one of my questions as well. I'm assuming you're still working through it, but that wasn't a question. Why was that taken out?
When we looked at the potential available parcels for something like this, it had to come out. Plus, when I got comments back from individual board members, it was removed.
Oh, that's great, but why, why, what was, I mean, I'm, I'm, what were the comments? I mean, it seems to me common sense should have to be linked to an arterial road for goodness sake.
You wouldn't have a place to put it.
But then they couldn't come.
No, but then it's, no, we get into circular argument, then it's excluded.
But then could they just say?
Well, it's not really excluded. If they can get in there, they they have to improve the road as much.
We're we're getting into like a legal quagmire here because then we get into.
Joe, with all due respect, we're not getting into legal quagmire. They have to have a road to get into the place and it can't be up a residential street. So to me arterial road is very important.
And so like we had somebody here at the last meeting who was talking about the trucks going in and out, in and out, heavy trucks. And and so now you're saying that like, there's not going to be that much traffic. And I I don't know how much traffic there's going to be, but I'm remembering one of the last supervisors meeting, somebody talking about the construction going on at a the water treatment plant, like trying to get your mail, there's no, there's no shoulder because the road is not a collector road and it's not an arterial road, so it's not built to that standard. And like you just trying to do your thing on your your local road and the trucks flying by, like if you build it, like I get that it's during construction, but if you build a use on a road that's not meant for that use, you're going to have conflicts like that. And so but but coming back to it, I don't know what the traffic situation is is going to be associated with the data center because there seem to be conflicting narratives about that.
It and like I said, we can definitely have the traffic engineer come here and speak to that as well. I mean, there's it's they're in the manual, it's not something new, it's it's there. And from what I understand, again, it's a fairly low volume use from a traffic perspective, again, not during construction. I'm not, I'm talking about the overall use once it's up and running. Construction's always an issue.
Got people that are going to be working this, someone sent here and talked about with about data centers and knew about them, and amount of traffic. We didn't even know it was a water company, the mountain tailor sort of coming up our roads all the time, we still, he has it on the street now, now I'm chasing life. You don't understand the impact on those little tiny roads that we all live on. Why don't you take a drive up? Those few on the board self, they're looking about Brown Drive or Penhurst Road, please, it's brown. See what we put up with on a daily basis right now with the water companies and their trucks and and the stuff that's coming through there. They finally put a speed bump on our road, some signs, and let me tell you, that's not necessarily slow any one down.
So let's, um, thanks for your comments. I think for the people on Zoom who didn't hear, so this sort of unofficial public comment, the the comment was just about the the usage of Brown Drive and Penhurst Road for the the water treatment plant and that if there's a need to refill the diesel generators often, it would be the same kinds of trucks on these small roads that are not meant for that use. So maybe we could get like some kind of definitive answer on that and from the manual and from also other communities that have data centers. Shout it out.
Hi, Mike. Chris?
For those on Zoom, Chris is wondering if access to this data center could be through North Church Street.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly possible and worth a look.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we're not figuring out how the access is going to be to this theoretical data center, but at some point when somebody's looking at it.
Isn't that important? I mean, if we're sitting here writing an ordinance for something and we know the only place it can go, we do have to think of these things. I mean, it's not, it's not in isolation. And if if they can, if if the owners of the data center can say we're being exclusionary because there's no access to it yet, it seems to me, well, then you they have to make the access. I mean, I don't see that that's being exclusionary.
Are you saying you can't put that in the ordinance that they have to provide?
You can't require off-site improvements when you go to develop a property.
Right, well, that's not really requiring off-site improvements, it's it's having them build a way to get in.
That's the definition of an off-site improvement.
It's an off-site improvement, but they need it to get in. It's not like we need a traffic signal, you know what I mean? It's a little bit diff.
No, it's not. Well, if you have, again, you have, and our traffic engineer would explain this much better than I will, but you have traffic impact fees that can be, that can take into consideration what the potential impact to off-site areas is based on the traffic that is being generated by the use. We right now don't have that type of a setup in the township. It's something the township engineers working on, something township manager and the board of supervisors have asked for, but that takes a fair amount of time to get to. There's a bunch of studies that you need to do, you need to create the impacted areas. And then you can assess what a potential fee would be based on each trip. When you're talking about PennDOT and HOP permits, they look at a different area. That's not something the township can do through its zoning. But PennDOT looks at the impact of the traffic that's generated by the use at different intersections, at a certain area away from the site. And it may require, for example, traffic signalization. We we went through that with Jones Motors. So it's not to say that there won't be some off-site improvements required at some level, but from a zoning perspective, you cannot require off-site improvements to be made. Traffic impact fees are different.
I I guess I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep going on this, but there is a road there already, North Church Street goes in and goes up there. Is it any different than going up Penhurst Drive or Brown Drive? I mean, it's about probably about the same size.
So and that may be reasonable condition, I'm not saying it is or is not, but.
No, I know, but that's, I'm just wondering if if they, you know, the residents along, say, Penhurst, let's just pick, pick, per side, they want to go in through Penhurst Road. Well, they're going to have to make some improvements of Penhurst Road, I would think, to get their trucks through, or somebody's going to have to do it. So why not? I I don't see any difference with suggesting they use Church Road for the same.
Well, I I think what Joe's saying, what I'm understanding is that the ordinance is not the place to put that. The conditional approval is the place to put that and specify you will use for talking sake, North Church Street for access and you will improve it by X amount. Is that correct?
That's if they would agree to the second part of what you just said, but putting the condition on for, to my way of thinking right now, in a vacuum, if you said, look, we have a road over here that provides access, it's of a higher designation from a PennDOT perspective or a township perspective versus Road B over here. Quit a reasonable condition of approval, be you have to use Road A. Yeah, it could be. Now, there's a lot of factors that may go into that, come up North Church, I don't know where eventually North Church gets to.
Goes right into there. I think that's that.
No, I mean, going the other direction, I don't know if there are, is a pinch point going the other way.
Well, it's this, I've good time to suggest that we have a site visit maybe to see what's up there because none of us know, we're not allowed in there really and.
Not a site visit to the property itself. What I'm saying is, is does Church Road end up in a residential neighborhood somewhere?
No, no, goes right up into that.
That's the air, the going. It starts at Bridge Street, okay? Then, yeah, I I again, I think based in what we just had, the conversation hypothetically, I could see that being a reasonable condition that you would put on. Correct.
Yeah, so it's.
But still, I mean, oh, I could bring it up some, I'm sorry.
Because this is.
Or it's a, or it's, I mean, I, again, you, I do not want to pass, give you my legal opinion on this, but if the board, if the planning commission is saying, we want a condition that North Church Street is the primary access into a particular site because of whatever reason. Okay, I I can, you know, but you're you're kind of really starting to pigeonhole something into one particular place.
This this ordinance isn't just for Penhurst.
Correct.
Used around the, it's not a specific project that's developed.
Correct, it's IMU industrial, that's correct.
I think one of the main issues is that the IMU district is an industrial district and it's got bad access.
Yeah.
And so any industrial use you put in there is going to have the big trucks and they've all got bad access. So like, is that a great spot for industrial mixed use? I think that's a question. Since this is a conditional use, we're including the conditions that they have to meet. If if this is important to us, like we talk about the traffic impact analysis, like, do we want to just say, like, one of the conditions is that you must prove that you're providing adequate access for the types of vehicles and volume of vehicles that will be expected without, you know, causing a detriment to residential roads or something like that.
Something of, is something along those lines, we can put in some some language like that. And that's really what the traffic analysis is supposed to be. It's supposed to analyze those things, it's supposed to figure out, or it's supposed to look at primary access points and look at bus routes, for example, right? Buses aren't allowed on certain roads or even trash trucks, heavy vehicles, we see weight limits all over the place. Those types of things would all be things that would be taken into consideration. Penhurst Road, for example, I don't know if there's a weight limit on the road, there probably should be, frankly. Right.
But even if there is a limit, who monitors it?
Punish, that becomes a police power. Noise you're not, there there noise is a whole different, I don't want to get into that, it's a whole different animal that is. That's a whole, well, no, from a, from a vehicle perspective, that it's, yes, so, but that's just a different animal.
I I still think we should have a site visit. I mean, I, there are a lot of woods on that property and just get a feeling for where they might want to be building and.
I think you're getting ahead.
Yeah, but there's only, well, but there is really only one specific site.
Well, I think we're, I mean, let's just put the elephant out in the floor.
Saying we can't have a site visit because we don't have anyone to give us permission to have a site visit because they haven't asked for anything yet.
Maybe maybe we should pick up the site visit conversation on five B on the agenda. Topics for planning commission discussion. And I think the issue that we're dealing with here is that this is an ordinance for the entire township, but we all know there's only one spot that this place could go. So we're kind of dealing with the big picture, but actually also, yeah, Church Street.
There's, there's, there are more, there is more than one site potentially, but it's only a handful of sites. I am not try, I am not trying to dance around the issue.
You're dancing beautifully, Joe.
Why, thank you. Two step pretty well. But no, I mean, we all know the, we we've already said publicly too, that the 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 entity or individual that came forward has an interest in Penhurst. So yes, that is part of what we're doing here, but to spot zone per se, just for Penhurst would be a problem.
No, you can't do that.
So that's why we're saying it's not just one place. But I mean, I know that in the past, the owner of that property has been very willing to allow for people to, you know, come and do site visits, provided they know about it and all of those things. So if that's something that the board, the planning commission is is interested in doing, I'm I'm sure we could at least reach out and see if that's an opportunity, again, unrelated to this particular zoning ordinance.
Does anybody have any comments on?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any more comments on the area and bulk regulations? Oh, I was asking about the board, but I will entertain ex-board members as well.
No, no.
Go for it, it's okay.
You know, I wondered what he would say about, you know, what could be done, so this is great. Something that's wider about Is there a way we can put something in here to say if there's a lot of new ones to not go to the neighborhood?
I don't know that we can regulate.
I, you're, you're, I think you're getting into an area where there's preemption, again, with the PUC and and other regulatory bodies. Could we put in here that they use best efforts to go around those areas? We could do something of that nature, sure. That was part of the conversation earlier is what we've done is kind of an opposite thing. We've limited the square footage based on the percentage of impermeable coverage. But then said you can, you only have three hundred thousand square foot of building regardless, but you can go up to thirty five percent with the TDR. So it is limited in that way, it's the thirty five percent.
Oh, you might need to turn it on if it's not.
That's on the.
Run the. It's about the traffic, all the roads are built. All three of them, they're on Drive and so dirt, it's dirt and battery, basically burrow. So they're all built with cars, we can put up with, you know, what are often constructing, protecting, disrupting. Here, everything you say about.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, does the board have any more comments on dimensional? Standards? Okay, we kind of talked about traffic impact analysis. Does anybody have any more comments on this section? Specific comments? I I had a question on C one. Um so it's talking about the traffic impact analysis shall include the following elements. Traffic impact on all roadways, intersections and interchanges within at least half of. With it within at least a one half mile radius of the site. The analy- the analysis radius may be expanded as a condition of conditional use approval by the Board of Supervisors. And I was kind of wondering, like, would they feel comfortable giving conditional use approval without seeing that? Like, if if they wanted to see more analysis. Then, like, what if the analysis showed, like, whoa, this is gonna be real bad, and it's already gotten conditional use approval?
No, yeah, I I maybe the maybe it's inartfully worded. Um but I think that we can um we can reword that. I understand what your point is, but the. The idea here was small data center, small radius, bigger data center, bigger radius. All based on what the traffic engineer would would recommend to the board, and that analysis would have to be a condition of approval. At land development, if it's bad, that's really where that would come in as a land development issue and and a potential denial.
So so maybe like um the Board of Supervisors may request an expanded analysis or something.
Yeah, we will. I'll reword that, but I think we're all under the same idea that that let that area is kind of flexible, if you will.
Okay. Any other specific comments on traffic impact analysis? Public water and sewer. Specific comments on public water and sewer.
Is public water and sewer up there?
If if it's not, it would be the closest public water and sewer plant that I've ever seen. It does not provide. Public water and sewer. So if if it's not, they will need to get it there.
Yeah.
For the site visit property in question.
Um tier uh number six, tier four design. I I kind of wonder, like. Is there any benefit to wanting to attract like a tier two? Or what what the difference is? Um maybe it wouldn't be as big, maybe it wouldn't be as loud, maybe it wouldn't have the water needs. I don't know.
It's possible, and and that's really because the tier, the design standards that they have right now, at least from this uptime institute. They they're the kind of gold standard tiering system for these data centers. It's really about. How long they're down for and the redundancy in the system for operations. It's not about the environmental impact. Only when they have what they call this tier five, and again, I think it was mentioned at the planning commission meeting last time. Um do you get into those environmental pieces? But it's ki- they they really don't have a tier five. If if they they're, the standards aren't really there. It just says kind of amorphous things that you'd be dealing with. And it may be that that list um of of fairly amorphous things becomes part of what the conditional bonuses are. Or the the bonus features are that you're talking about. So I I don't, this came from the conversation that we had um at the last planning commission meeting. I, it could be. It could be something different. It could be based on square footage. It could be, if you have a certain amount of square footage, you need to be at least. Tier whatever it is, and then up to tier four.
Well, maybe this is something that Roger, your company could weigh in on because I I kind of wonder like. Are we pigeonholing ourselves into getting a giant data center? If we require tier four design.
Yeah, or tier, the again, the quote unquote tier five, yes.
Yeah.
Uh absolutely, and and you're also pricing out. Some smaller companies from being able to utilize that space. Now, you might end up getting it anyway, of course.
Right.
Um but the design, I I think. I think that it would be beneficial to have that flexibility in your ordinance, so we might want to take this back out.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
Well, I think this is a case that I I don't really have the expertise to answer that question. I don't know what tier four means, and so. Is it related to, is there, so back to my question a while ago, is there a LEEDs uh certification that doesn't depend on size?
This, the, uh to be clear, the the tiering that we're talking about here. Has only to do with the operation of the data center itself. So the higher the tier, the less time it's offline. Tier one, there's going to be a more, and it's it's measured in minutes, not in days or hours. It's measured in minutes. Uh but the lowest tier has the most time offline where the data cannot be, that's stored there, cannot be accessed. Tier four has the most redundant system out there, the best system out there in terms of being able to keep. That data center up and running. By way of example, tier one, if they have to shut it down. The whole thing shuts down. There's one power source, it shuts down. And you're offline for a period of time. Tier four, you're going through redundant systems. It does not shut down if you have to bring one system offline.
So why do we want that?
Right, and so from like a community development perspective, like, I'm not sure why we should care about the data center.
Different tiers refer to the different types of customers that wanna would want to purchase that service from there. If you have a a company, I don't want to use names, that can never turn off. Because they would lose sales or their. Whatever, whatever. Or the internet would shut down, correct. They don't rely on a tier one facility. They're the ones that you see out west that are building the desert and have millions of square feet and build their own power plant.
Okay, so what what I'm hearing then is that I don't see why we need that in our ordinance. But I would like to put something in the ordinance that uh. That helped, that made it be built to uh more LEEDs standards, whatever that is.
I think, I'm sorry.
Joe was Joe was saying that there, this tier five was mentioned at the last meeting, which doesn't relate to data center operations. It relates to those green design standards, and so maybe if we can pull some of those out and make them incentives. That.
We can, that's, I think that's a good at least start for that conversation, plus what you've already listed. Uh earlier in this meeting, and we can bring Roger's folks into that. Um and I think, again, the the tiering, that just came out of the conversation that was at the last meeting. That's why I put it in. Um I think it makes sense from what I'm hearing now to take it back out.
Well, I also do think, I know that the LEEDs had is working or has, maybe it's just working on standards for data centers. And we should probably look at those two.
LEED standards are for. Yes, they're for building standards, right? But I don't know that that is really going to get you to the place that you're looking to get in terms of the environmental standards and and perhaps benefits. Um through bonus.
Well, wherever we can get those, we should be looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood. I I I've got the directive.
So you're gonna take out six?
Six will come out, yes.
Okay, um seven woodland standards. Any comments?
Well, before we get to woodland standards, can you talk about this arterial thing again? I mean, I get what the comment is, yeah, if we put arterial mandy in, you know, it's going to preclude almost everything. But is there a way to put something in in the context of incentives that um adequate access that doesn't. Detrimentally affect local communities will be, has to be part of the the planning process. I mean, something, I mean, we can't just leave it silent, it seems to me. Otherwise, the residents of this community are basically relying on. A hypothetical future conversation at the Board of Supervisors to ensure that that happens. Shouldn't it be codified somewhere? In some wording in an ordinance?
So I I hear what you're saying, and the closest thing that I can point to right now is in section four. Uh six, which is on the fourth page at the top. It's part of the traffic impact analysis, and it says documentation of onsite and offsite improvements proposed to mitigate any adverse impacts. So it's a very broadly worded way of suggesting that. Perhaps there may be offsite improvements that need to be considered based on the type of traffic coming through, uh without actually saying.
What if you add something that says to that section that says. The data center conditional use will only be granted if the traffic to impact analysis can demonstrate that.
Uh that's the point, so.
Right.
I mean.
That is the point.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say that. Like something very explicit.
Again, you we can, as long as we're not excluding, i- if if by adding that, we exclude any potential property in the township. Um from that could uh be the site for a data center. Then we have a problem. If we're not excluding them, okay.
Well, I I think that. It's basically the same as you as you have in the traffic to impact analysis because you have that. Number six, documentation of onsite and offsite improvements proposed to mitigate any adverse impacts. It's really only providing a little bit more grounding that. Your impact analysis has to show it's gonna be okay.
I I hear what you're saying.
Well, I mean, that would be pretty standard, wouldn't it, if we force some, but if the, if we make someone have a a. A survey on something, then. We we have to say, well, that survey has to prove that everything's okay, or you know, that it works, right? I mean.
That's, we're we're, I think we're all saying a similar thing. I just get. I I just want to make sure that the ordinance is not only protecting the township, but fully enforceable.
Yeah.
At least the best of my ability.
Yep.
But I I mean, we'll play with that language. I don't, I get the concept.
Just that I know, you know, how many areas are zoned for industrial mixed use?
How many, how many areas in the township? It's the, you're right.
I know there's a map, but I don't want to go over and look at it.
It's this area is, I obviously, the Penhurst area is part of that with the IMU. Um there are other areas along Bridge Street, uh part of the Jones Motors track behind it. Uh I believe uh the property's next door to it as well, um or some of them.
None of them are are big enough.
There are a, I, we are going through that analysis right now, and part of what we're doing here is figuring out, once we get the bulk standards somewhat. Nailed down, what that means in terms of the township.
I'm just trying to grow my own understanding. It's like, yeah.
Yeah, but in short, it looks like less than a dozen total properties as they exist today.
Yep.
That area you're talking about is zoned industrial, not. This is the only area up here at Penhurst that's one tract.
The IMU and the industrial right now, at least the way the ordinance is written, have that catchall. That's what we were talking about before. Um and that's where.
I I know, I I don't want to bring up the argument from last time.
This is the illegal thing.
Yes, I guess it is. Yeah, I mean, we have an industrial district.
Yes.
That allows for, has the catchall.
Yes.
And then in the, I now say, I forgot, I had this all in my head for last month's meeting, but. In the IMU, there is a mixed use of all uses. In the industrial.
Correct.
And that's not just bringing, again, that's just not bringing in everything in the industrial center per se. It's bringing it in a planned development. I said it last time, I'm saying.
I I understand where you are. I I really do with that analysis, and in in a sense, you are correct. I I don't want to mistake that. Um under that catchall, that they could just plop a data center, nothing else down. Um under the IMU district, there are other perhaps categories that would fit in the IMU. Uh but regardless, if they did data center plus one thing. Um that's where I think that catchall provision becomes very problematic, but.
And and I understand that we we are just making an ordinance for a data center. They would have to. At some point, follow that other part of the ordinance that I keep bringing it up, that it should be part.
Well, uh no, this, the what what is being proposed here. Creates a conditional use category of uses being data centers um in the.
In the IMU, so this is going to allow data centers.
It would either be in the IMU, yeah, yeah, it could, yes.
Wait, what did you ask? What did he say, Steve?
The question was whether or not this creates a category of uses of data centers in the IMU. And that's what that, if you look at the very first page of the ordinance, that's that first section that's referenced, twenty seven eight oh two four one. Um that's, that's the cat, that would be.
So by writing this ordinance, we're saying this is a use, a conditional use in the IMU.
Correct.
And by creating the use, it is no longer a part of the catchall.
Correct.
In the the general industrial, so you can't do this in general industrial.
Well, that's part of the conversation that once we get through this, we should have is is what is the appropriate place to have this? Right now, it could be in industrial and in the IMU. Should it be in both those places? Continue to be in both those places.
Well, the area and bulk standards are different in the GI district.
They they are.
And the height.
Yes.
A lot different.
Yes. And that's why, do you want to have this framework for across the board? This is what you have for data centers. And you could cross-reference both places.
I I suggest we not talk about that right now.
We go down the rabbit hole on that one. Because there's, well, anyway, yes, let's not talk about that.
Woodland standards. Who's got a comment?
Well, I'm I'm glad you took it back to fifty percent rather than a hundred percent. But I still think that we uh should try to minimize the amount of woodlands cleared by having. By having that initial environmental um caveat of coming in and and seeing what is there. And trying to work around with what is there, like, for instance, woodlands would stop a lot of noise. So if you. Picked a spot that was in the middle of the woodlands to put this data center. There's there, because there are some cleared spots now because they they're they're taking down the buildings. So if you used one of those cleared areas that was surrounded by woodland, that would help an awful lot.
Right.
I don't know how you put that in an ordinance other than. You have them follow that four-step process in a sense, uh the the same kind of idea where you look at what's there. And try to fit what you're bringing in to what is there.
Being environmentally sensitive.
Yeah, it it, no, I I think that the environmental impact analysis is part of that. Um that's mirrored from the saldo as well. Could there be some kind of, again, I I guess to the conversation that we had earlier. Um could there be some kind of bonuses for environmental um responsibility? If you have, if you're removing fifty percent of of the woodland that is on a particular site. Is really the better play, uh a reforestation of part of the site. Um rather than just caliper diameter replacement.
I still don't understand why we need different standards, woodland standards for this use. Than just the underlying zoning.
I don't think that it is anymore.
So so why are they in there?
Again, we didn't want to, if we took something completely out, I didn't want to give the impression that it was gone.
Yeah, yeah. I I recommend that we take it out. And so that the underlying zoning are in our woodland protection standards that apply in all zoning districts would apply. The same as this to this as they do to everything.
Yeah, I don't want, yeah, I would say in that we really beef up those if we can.
I think they, I think we should, I think the planning commission should definitely look at that. And and, you know, give some clear direction on those things. But that's, I, yeah, I I get it.
Okay, so you guys are okay with removing woodland standards?
Well, I don't know what the benefit of removing them is.
Of removing them?
Yeah. What's the benefit?
Well, I didn't go and word for word check how they relate to what's in our ordinance. The natural resource protection ordinance, is it mirrored? Is it the same?
Not exactly the same. We tried to click, we tried to address a few things, um, to just be, give specific examples. To just help things along, to help a a reasonable person understand.
And and the other thing is that the EIC has put to, is putting together a new natural resource. Uh, uh, ordinance, and so. It's much stronger than what we have, and so if we have in here something that's 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 less, it's not a good idea. They should have to go.
But they should be absolutely consistent. I just think. You know, in the principles of regulation, you tell them once, you tell them twice, and you tell them third time when they're leaving the meeting room. I I don't see a harm in having it in there so long as it's completely consistent.
Right, well, that's the thing, it wouldn't be consistent if we had a new natural resource, we would probably change it, yeah.
What we could do, though, is reference that section here as opposed to completely. Um, trying to reconstitute it.
Yeah.
So I don't have, and I think that was, yeah, I think that was.
As long as it's explicit, that's fine.
Exactly.
Okay. So reference the existing natural resource woodland protection standard.
Yes.
Okay.
I one final question on item D of the woodland about the fee in lieu of replacement trees. I thought we said last time we didn't like that. I know it's may accept at discretion, but. Is that consistent with the existing ordinance?
That is, no, that is not consistent with the existing ordinance. Um, there is a fee in lieu of. When you put this in your subdivision and land development ordinance, you can almost always waive certain things and ask for fees in lieu. When you put them in your zoning, rather than be very specific about you, what you. You are required to do if you put provisions like this, and it allows for that same concept by conditional use. So if this all goes away and it's it's addressed through um woodland protection and Saldo provisions, it's implied. There's no reason to replicate it here.
So it does exist in woodland protection and the Saldo provision.
In in the Saldo provisions, it exists, and other parts, it doesn't, th- this is part of why we we should probably look at. This ordinance overall.
The woodland protection ordinance.
Which the EAC is looking at now.
But you're not looking at the Saldo.
We should, I guess.
Okay.
So what happens to this if it comes out? If we just delete this whole section and refer them?
It it comes out.
And we're gonna, but you're gonna put a refer it.
Correct, but I think the question was, what about the fee in lieu provision? Does that come out? We would refer to the other ordinance and and just make sure that we're very clear about what the opportunity is there.
So there'd be a reference to the zoning and to the Saldo.
There would probably have to be a reference to zoning in Saldo.
Yeah. Are you good, Lawson?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, eight adequate second means of ingress and egress comments.
Yeah, I think, I think we got that one.
All right. Number nine, a additional development standards for data center equipment. Should be in accordance with the following. Um, I thought that data center equipment maybe should be data center accessory uses.
We could do both. We could absolutely use both, and this is again, if we were, if you were going to add supplemental standards. This is another place that perhaps they could go.
Yeah. Ten environmental impact study comments.
Oh, back to nine.
Yeah.
What did we just say about that? I mean.
Yeah.
We said we were going to have it. Development standards for data center equipment and accessory uses, and then. If we were to add supplemental use standards for any of those accessory uses in the future, that that's where they would go or be referenced.
Cause I mean, so we're leaving this the way it is, ground like C says, ground mounted DCE. Shall not be located in any front yard. What what do they mean by front yard? Somebody, a resident's front yard, no, it can't be. The building's front yard. Yeah, the front yard, but I mean. So. All right, so shouldn't be located, and then B says, DCE shall be separated from any. Adjacent residential uses by a principal building. In other words, hidden by another building, is that what that means?
They'd have to be separated by, yes.
So hidden behind, I don't know what, otherwise I don't know what separated means.
Well, you'd have to have a principal building between the residential use and the accessory use or accessory, uh, the DCE.
So they have to kind of be hidden inside.
From the residential perspective.
The residential.
Presumably, these. Facilities are smaller than the principal structures.
Cell town.
That would be except, that, again, that's where we get to the accessory use, that would not be hidden from the residential. Um, perspective because of the height of the cell town. Yeah, right, exactly. Generators, things like that, of course.
So it's almost nine o'clock. We've got a bunch of people here who are up past their bedtimes. Uh, once again, so. And we still, we still have a lot to get through, um. What do you guys think about taking a break and doing public comment so that if anybody wants to leave, that they can? And then we can keep trucking along, but do like maybe twenty minutes of public comment?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right, so would anybody like to make a comment? And it. Especially people who maybe didn't get to comment last time, or have something to comment on related to the the latest revisions. Go ahead, Marrow.
The rather prehensile one eighteen Penhurst Road, it just popped into my head after doing a little reading, so. I understand these data centers might have like a little shelf life, is it ten years or so? So what happens to the shell of these buildings? After the fact, when they're done, is there gonna be another data center built? To complement the one that's not working anymore, or what happens to the building?
The buildings don't have a shelf life, it's the the. Equipment inside of the buildings that potentially does, and they just replace it.
So the building stays as is and they just replace that, okay. Thank you.
So Chris McNeil Nottingham Drive. I wanted to bring to your attention, I know that the new, um, so this is twelve talking about sound and noise. I wanna share an article that comes out of Prince William County. And the Great Oak uh, community organization is now has a committee that is working jointly. With their township to come up with a good noise ordinance. They were about to pass it, but now it's been delayed, but there's a couple of things that I think would be. Appropriate for East Vincent. The community remains plagued by low frequency roars coming from data centers. A type of house penetrating sound that is not regulated by current ordinances and fail the new ordinance. My seven-year-old wakes up and says he thinks there is a spaceship outside of our house. Whose home on Windell Circle seems especially relevant to busy data centers. Okay, so what they did. They worked with a company called Nelson Acoustics. And they're a consultant that's working with this committee of residents in the town. To write a new limit on sound, which is something that I would hope that maybe we could get more information on. In July of twenty three, um, they began to look at. Uh, different ways that they could deal with the impulse noise. They added restrictions on continuous noise, that is noise that lasts for ten minutes or longer. Those limits are especially low in the hoods. So it's lower than what is currently proposed, Joe, in the ordinance you have.
What's the limit?
Fifty-two decibels in the daytime and forty-seven decibels at night. And they say that this uh is hoping to change their impulse data. But I think that this group Nelson Acoustics, I know that you've assembled a team, and I appreciate that the. Township has brought in different experts, but maybe we need to look at Nelson Acoustics as a possibility.
My understa- and Roger, you'd better answer this than I. My understanding is that Gannett Fleming has acoustical engineers out the wazoo that do exactly this thing. So that's one of the reasons that we brought them on.
But I think true, but I also think that since they're working right in a community with an existing data center that's having ongoing noise problems. And they're working together to change the noise ordinance. Now, I also wanna just make one final statement about the noise ordinance that we need in our township. You know, years ago, I was kind of the person who helped get a noise ordinance, but it addresses residential areas. Parties, you know, ongoing noise of lawn mowers. We could create a tiered noise ordinance. I think it's critical that we do this. And that within the industrial areas or the ICMU, we address specific issues of the types of sound. That emanates out of these data centers.
Do you, do you, do you have any idea of when these were built?
Yeah, but can I address the noise thing? Uh, Monica Scriber Valley Creek Lane, so um, noise is huge and. Fifty-two, based on my research, is even too high for daytime. Um, there is a study done, and. It's not just about what we hear, it's about the pressure, and so, um. The SSDBA effective quiet level likely represents the sound pressure level. At which reversible intracellular chemical processes involved in hearing are overwhelmed, eventually causing noise induced hearing loss. Apparently, this is one of the largest, um, I don't know if they're calling it diseases or not, but. Old people, old people aren't losing their hearing because they're old. They're losing it because they're being exposed to these. You know, if you live near an airport, you're gonna be hearing those planes and those noises going past, and so. Um, different, and and yes, when you are in a room and you're speaking, it's fif- fifty decibels. But when you study sound, they'll tell you that it like doubles, like ten decibels. Twenty decibels isn't just twenty decibels, it's like forty decibels. And so, um, this study goes on to say that noise induced hearing loss in, oh, this is about the elderly, but this is the key. It says unwanted sound is stressful, so that constant hmm. And it is the lawnmowers, especially how we're developing our area now. This, I would say, a lawnmower is a perfect example. In where we live now, a lawnmower can run, and I'm not kidding you, for four to five hours a day, sometimes longer. And it is a irritating, and and you become anxious, and your blood pressure gets raises, and then you have become. Have car- cardiac issues. This is all documented. This isn't, I'm not pulling this out for pretend. People are getting sick because of the amount of these um humming low, low level noises. Um, what noise level is safe? I ask from causing non-auditory health effects. The non-auditory health effects are the stress, are the blood pressure, are the cardiac issues. And so, um, there is a study in twenty twenty-one from the American Public Health Association policy statement. Noise is a public health hazard, and um, that's another document you can look into, but. Um. There's something else she said about that study about noise. I have it all written down here, but I'm, I, to be honest, I'm, I'm learning things I I had no idea. I'm completely overwhelmed, but um, there's also a scientist. John uh, Liver, uh, PhD, twenty-five years NASA scientist. And he zeroed in on what he believes is the biggest threat to residential neighborhoods in data centers, and it's the noise. And so there's not just one study doing these things. The monotonous hum will be heard from homes, neighborhoods, and schools within a half-mile radius. A slight noise would be heard by most within two miles of any large data center campus. It is not a pleasant sound, it is a consistent and monotone, and it resonates at a pitch and frequency the human ear latches onto. And it never stops. The sound can cause harmful effects such as headaches, trouble sleeping, disruptions, depression. Uh, he conducted his own study and found that most schools would see average decibels rise. From forty-six to sixty-one to fifty-six to seventy decibels with this. Now, he's doing a study and there are certain data centers within a radius of the school. Uh, in neighborhoods, noise often ranges from forty to sixty decibels. Seventy decibels is the kind of noise one hears standing right next to an air conditioner. However, the noise will be twenty-four seven, and that's what we have to think about here. Um, you know, to have somebody say to you, uh, they don't, they don't make noise is ludicrous. Because there's too many people that are experiencing this firsthand, and there's some people are in, um, are suing. Uh, the data centers because they literally cannot stop hearing the noise. And it goes on to say that Liver said it is the tone, pitch, and frequency of the noise are the most troubling. Because it's not easy to tune it out, and it falls within the range of human speech, just as you said, Joe. So the mind will latch on to it. People say it is annoying and disruptive, and it never stops, and so. What happens, though, is we start to ignore it, and our brains are still receiving that frequency, and that is the problem. And so the noise of data centers has recently gained national attention in uh, Chandler, Arizona, since residents say the noise. From the data centers is unbearable in their residential neighborhood. Residents hear it outside and even inside their homes, it keeps them awake at night, TV will not even tune it out. So Chandler's trying to reverse the course. Um, and this is the other thing that I think is really important, and I don't know how you put it into your ordinance. But I would highly recommend you make this recommendation, and that is. Um, I keep seeing, especially with the hyper, I think they're the hyper centers, I I can't get them. I can't, I get them confused. So Amazon, the residents go to the township or or to Amazon and say, look, we can't sleep. The noise is so bad, it's disrupting our lives, and they say, well, we're gonna put this on, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna retrofit. And then they do all these things, and it still doesn't help. And so Amazon won't comment anymore, they've done what they needed to do, and so I think there has to be. You know, the comment was made about, um, we have to be careful, we don't wanna tip things, tip the scale over. Well, when you were talking about the health of the residents in this township. How far is too far to tip the scales when we're talking about our hearing? And I'm telling you, I'm experiencing it now with the amount of heavy equipment that I'm hearing on a daily basis. Um, at my, where I live, my little sleaze of heaven, that's gone now. I mean, and there's more planes going over, so um, I can, I can go on and on about this. Um, one of the studies that I I saw, they actually recommend thirty-five. As the um, the lower level because of the impacts this is having. And um, I have that somewhere, and I have other comments too, but I just wanna address, I'll address the noise for now. I think it's imperative that you look at the studies and you listen to the people that they're that are living through this. Can you imagine if your child comes to you at night and says, I think there's a spaceship outside of my, my window, can you make it stop? Because we have no control over that. This is where we have control. And I, where noise is concerned, if we have to include the studies, I think we should include the studies.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Go ahead.
I'm Larry Teigen. I live in East Coventry and I saw you folks were dealing with this issue. So I'm on the planning commission. So I, so I thought, let me sit in because you guys are, are ahead of us and see what I could learn so we could, you know, kind of follow your footsteps. So I appreciate you guys taking, taking the ball and taking the lead on this. Just from my observation.
Marky owes me.
Yeah, he'll be talking to you about giving us some information. But you know, what I'll be asking our, our consultants, just from listening to the discussion today, because I haven't done any, any research yet, although I've been in data centers, I'm a little bit familiar with them. You know, what I would ask my consultant and maybe my, my, my engineers, can you give me a couple examples of today's data centers, the large ones? The small ones, they're not going to move out into a rural area and build a small data centers. They're usually embedded. If you, if you go through like the financial district in New York, all those tall buildings, ten floors of those are data centers. Then they're not going to call those data centers, the data centers are embedded in another use. But what I would be interested in is the large-scale modern data centers, can I have a couple examples of what are they looking like? Because what I'm imagining is, is a, a big data center with a central utility plant built on it. And that would, that would give me the opportunity to look at that and say, well, if I know my central utility plant is, can be in one location as an auxiliary, as auxiliary use, I can then require the, the chillers, the generators, the coin towers, the boilers, if they're doing cogeneration, all that equipment in a central utility plant. Then if, if I want lead may then have some impact because I can, I can, I don't know if I can specify, but I can ask that that equipment be the most efficient equipment. That's what I believe is going to generate the noise. The chillers, the towers, those things that just go on forever, the boilers, et cetera. If I could put those in the central utility plant, I then would have a better opportunity, I believe, to really deal with, deal with the sound because that's where I believe the sound is going to come from. But what would be interesting to me, if I could get a couple examples, and that's what I'll be asking my consultants for, can I give, get a couple examples of what are these data centers being designed for now, so I can look at them and then I would have a better feel. But I would be expecting that they would tend to have a central utility plant. And if I could put all the chillers, the towers, the generators and those type of things, specify a level of efficiency to keep the noise down and then some acoustics around that, I may have a better opportunity, even if I find out that I have an issue after it's constructed, at least I know that all my noise generating equipment is in that central utility plant. And maybe I can then have a better chance of dealing with that. So that, that's one takeaway that, that I got from this. I appreciate that. The only other thing is in the, in the definition of a data center, is there a better way to define the data center based on the amount of storage or how much, how much data center activity is going? How many servers, how many terabytes? Some way that I can, I can say, because I'm, I am anticipating in some cases that there may be other uses within that facility. And they may call it an office building and it's a small office building, big data center. I don't know, how do I get my hands around it? Because in my experience, they don't always come to you and say, hey, I'm building a data center. They may be saying, I'm, I'm, I'm building this facility for my medical records or whatever data they're using. I don't know how we define the data center or the size of it. There may be something in that industry that better, give me a better gauge of what is, what is the size of the data center, more than just the square footage, because that square footage may be more or less. So anyway, appreciate the, the opportunity to listen in and, you know, I'll take some of this on to, on to our township. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Molly.
Just a minute, there's somebody on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Molly Wagle, nineteen Carrion. I do want to echo the concerns about noise, you know, and, and again, just reiterate the difference between a constant steady state noise. And I think there are ways to get around it to protect ourselves and, and sorry if this was already discussed, but I think if we have the lower limits at, at night and you can have, you know, if it's a steady state noise for greater than one hour and to, to get those thresholds lower, but also make sure that we're not, you know, if people want to have parties and stuff like that, that, you know, I, I think we, there are creative ways. We could work to protect our residents. I also just want to highlight again, we have a park right there or this great park that we want to put in. There's many neurodivergent people that have extra sensitivity to sound. And I just want to be mindful with all the neighborhoods around with children, you know, to make sure that we're not putting really undue burdens on, I mean, on, on everyone, but especially keeping, you know, keeping some of those populations in mind. And then the other comment I wanted to make was I, I, I'm not an expert when it comes to TDRs, but I was certainly concerned and I appreciated the comment by someone on the planning commission that, you know, something like a TDR would, doesn't help the people that are living in that area. And so I, I do strongly encourage us to think of other creative ways to make sure that we're not, you know, still putting the burden on, on those in the area. And if we're taking this one particular parcel, if we're looking at Penhurst, I mean, again, I live here and we're getting so much impact from, as, as they mentioned, the traffic coming for, for the water treatment plant. But okay, that's kind of a short-term thing, but then we have Jones Motor coming and there's just so, and I know this is not necessarily your problem, but it's our problem. And there is so much coming within this really tiny area. It's pretty, it's pretty hard. So just wanted to, again, I'm not sure what you do with that, but I just want to raise the concern that it's, it's just a lot. So whatever we can do to really support the residents in this area is greatly appreciated. Again, I'll say thank you so much for putting in the speed bump and, and certainly appreciate the, the diligence of the planning commission tonight.
Thanks, Molly. Go ahead.
Cindy Ramsey, one sixteen Penhurst Road. So I don't know if any of you listened to the webinar that a bunch of us, some of us, residents, last Wednesday night, southwestern Pennsylvania. This advocacy, advocacy group that talked about what they're dealing with from the fallout of the data center in western, southwestern Pennsylvania. If you haven't, it's on YouTube. It's a webinar that you should really listen to. And it really brings up not only the sound, but the environmental impacts from data centers. The chemicals that end up into the streams and the water and the earth and the things that they're dealing with, that they wish they had known ahead of time. And, and if you haven't listened to it, you really should. It's about an hour and a half, I believe, Chris. It blew my mind and I went, why are we putting in data centers? What are we doing to our state? What are we doing to the people who live here and our environment? Not just sound, but pollution, the air, our land, the water. Is it really worth all this money coming in to help our state? And the money that it makes to offset our taxes? That we keep polluting our world? And not, and, and think about having the life. How do we extend our lives with all this pollution? And, and I understand Governor Shapiro is big on the whole data center thing and I have a few things I'd like to say to him too, and I will. So I, I just want you to take a lot of this into consideration. If you haven't listened to some of this stuff and the people that are living around data centers, please find the time to do so because you're the ones that get to make these decisions for the rest of us that live in this township and this area. And the impact already from the water company, by the way, Molly, it's ongoing. There'll be tankers that go up there and fill up all the time. The gentleman on Shady Lane said, we don't even know the half of it yet. He talked about how they actually pull in on his lawn because they're backed up down the road. So we haven't even seen the beginning of what's really going to happen with the water company after it's completed. We're grateful for this township that they put a speed bump in. I love my neighbor who said, oh, my God, they put it in front of someone's house. I can't even imagine the noise. It's in front of my house. And I've got news for you. I don't, I will put up with it if it will slow the traffic down and protect the people that live in my neighborhood. I can live with that. We'd like to have a couple more speed bumps, which we hope to take up with township because ones just doesn't seem to get people's attention enough that think that they can just drive by and over it at whatever speed they want. So we, we were dealing, again, there's this little corner. I realize we're the so-called poorer part of the township. We're not the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes or more. And, and we've been there a long time, a lot of these homes. And Penhurst has been there and unfortunately, our state decided it just wasn't worth keeping up after it got emptied out. And they let it just go. I used to walk it when it was a beautiful campus. It would have made a great college campus. It was gorgeous and I would go back there and walk a two and a half mile track every day. And it's sad that that's gone. I don't have the rights to go back there and walk. It was beautiful grounds. Please take the time and go back there and walk the property if you can. Come up Penhurst Road, come up Brown. See these small roads that have been built a long time ago that our communities live in. And we deal with this traffic and we put up with this all the time. And to thought of putting now a data center in with everything else. I mean, we already deal, you've heard me about the Penhurst situation. I really hate that that got changed to, from zoning four to mixed-use industrial so that they could have their haunted house there. I really wanted to ask someone, did they get approval? Does that also mean that they can have these fundraisers with car shows and beer gardens and so forth else down there as well? Because all that impacts us. The cars that come through there with these massive engines roaring down our street, I couldn't even hear my television that weekend. What it does to our homes because we're close to the road, the vibration, the noise. And, and now we're talking about more noise, more traffic. Though data centers don't provide a lot of jobs, they're shot, talked about that, maybe thirty, thirty-five people. But there's a lot of things that go on, a lot of trucks that bring in the fuel to, that manages these batteries and things. You're, you just got to really take into consideration what you're, we're up against in our community. And, and I appreciate the job you're doing and the research and especially the community, the amount of research that you guys have done just blows my mind. I, you know, I wish I had more time to do it. But please take these things into consideration with the zoning. I, I do have a question for Nicole. You made a comment in the very beginning about, is this a plan like two years ago? Or something? You made some plan, talk about bringing this plan two years or something? I just want you to know that someone posted the plan for Penhurst, what's two, three years ago? And there's six buildings that are labeled on it, industrial slash data centers. Yes. So, so obviously someone's known this has been coming for some time. And I feel like in a way, we've just been misled that this has been known. This was why they wanted to enlarge Brown, widen Brown, take down that house that they bought and put a light in at seven twenty-four so that they would have access for eighteen-wheelers to go through there. We all know this because we're up against that back then. We're looking at the same thing now. Please take into consideration what our side, so to speak, of the township is dealing with already. But we already know that this plan is already out there. It's not, it's not new. So you can tell us whatever you want, but we've seen it. Someone actually posted it.
The plan that you're referring to is from a prior administration. That plan is not at all what, what we're talking about. There is no plan.
Well, that's interesting because they, that's what they said. This is two to three years ago. Is this what you guys are dealing with?
It's, it, the plan that you're talking about is from the prior administration. The prior manager actually asked those designations to be put on that plan. That's, that's a different, that plan died, so to speak.
But it's being sort of revived.
It's, if you want to call it that, yes.
Yes. It would have been nice to have known that, that that was what was happening, that it's really, they're just coming back around to it, some other administration or whatever you want to say. It just kind of made us feel like we weren't hearing the total truth of it. That's all. That's the way it felt to a lot of us when that was posted online. It kind of took me back a little bit because I didn't realize that those buildings were already labeled that way as industrial slash data centers.
Again, that was a public plan from two, three, it was, it predates Bob, it predates me, it predates engineers.
I understand.
And that plan, again, that plan was not something that we were presented with and said, this is what we want.
Okay.
That is not what happened.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey. Look, you can, you can come back, Chris, but let's, we need to move on. Yeah. Oh. Does, does anybody who doesn't, who hasn't spoken want to say anything? Okay. Didn't think so. All right, come on back, Chris.
Chris McNeil Nottingham Drive. I just wanted to point out, you referenced the fee and lieu. That fee and lieu is extremely outdated and it was called out in two thousand and twelve that it should have been updated. And please update the fee and lieu section or we're not going to get our money's worth on anything.
Okay. All right, it is now nine thirty. We, we are not going to get through this by ten. And we also have our township manager here who has a spot on the agenda. And we should probably let him talk too. So let's see. Where we kind of left off was at the sound part and the environmental impact part. And I think that people are probably going to have some things to say about that. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to keep going through this?
Pick up at ten next time?
Pick up at ten next time?
Not at four, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went through the whole thing again. We had the same questions, even taking care of the arguments.
Great.
And start at, and then.
Right.
We start where we actually left off.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we got time.
Well, I mean, on a bigger picture question, we, we're kind of wordsmithing this to some extent. But the bigger questions that I thought we had were, you know, what about the engineers? What about Michelle? What about some of the data input that we need to cogently and in an informed manner query this? Should we not try to get that on the next agenda and then do the word smoothing?
Yeah.
To me, that seems a much more logical cart before the horse kind of thing.
I think that would be great. And then was it, I, I thought the plan was also to create some kind of like concept sketch for what something could potentially look like. Is that still coming too?
Yeah, we have those and we're working through them. I'm working through them with staff.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we should stop for the night, but I think we all should keep in mind, maybe trying to find information from areas that the data center is there, what problems they have come up with so that we can get them into our ordinance also.
And I would add to that recently constructed data centers because it seems like the technology is pretty different.
Right.
And it was ten years.
And, and to the point of someone that spoke, you know, technology is increasing exponentially and these data centers are probably prematurely going to be extinct in a couple of years. I mean, it's just amazing how much things change and have changed in my lifetime in particular. And they, they change every year. So there has to, and there probably is, I haven't. So there has to, I, and there probably is, I haven't seen it yet. There has to be some kind of, something that built into the ordinance on how they decommission the plants. Do they just take them down or what happens?
Well, I think that also would happen at the state level because of the types of
That would more than likely happen at the state level because they, a lot of the stuff that they would use in the plant would be regulated. And there's potential for contamination of the concrete and everything else. So there would be a decommissioning plan that would be put in place when they would when that time comes.
So that, so there wouldn't have to be anything in our ordinance or maybe, maybe
I would say you would put something like uh, decommissioning of the facility should occur in accordance with uh state, county, federal regulations.
Right. Cause I'm sure there's lasting stuff, just like there would be lasting stuff left over at a nuclear plant or any of these things, right?
Yeah, if I did all the time.
So if I, if I may make a suggestion, I think we're at the point in this ordinance where um, I can very briefly tell you the environmental impact study came right out of SAD though. It's, it's a one for one. Um, so that's identical. We have some pollution standards and things in the sound study standards. It sounds to me though, um, if we make the revisions that have been proposed this evening, um, that it might be the appropriate time to take the red lines out. Um, and send this over to Roger and his crew for a review. And that way you're getting more of the technical information that you're searching for at this point, rather than just go through and wordsmith these things.
I think we do need technical help.
And I, and Michelle as well, of course. And so I think I think we're kind of at that point with, with this unless there's any big uh, picture items that, that folks are concerned with. Other than the overall ordinance.
It's the technical stuff that, that I'm wondering about.
That's, that's why I think maybe it's time to just, we'll fold everything together, we'll, we'll provide a red line so that you see what we have changed. Uh, but then we'll, we'll make it a clean draft as the revised draft to be reviewed by the consultants.
I, so I, I think that's a good process. Um, I would actually also say that sound um, based on my reading and based on what I'm hearing from everybody else is, is kind of the big thing.
No question.
Um, you know, and we have statements in here like a preliminary sound study shall be conducted as part of the conditionals process. I think it'd be useful to actually have an, uh, an auditory expert in here, a sound expert. To actually say, well, how will that be conducted?
And, and that's why, you, you're
So I, I'd like, I mean, not hypothetical, I'd like to actually hear someone in here talk to us about that.
Sure. I think Roger's team could probably provide that insight.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
And, and just so, we did include a three-step process. It's before, during, and after to make sure that those sound standards are maintained. I think really the issue is what are the standards, not the study, not the study itself? And how is it conducted? How's the study conducted?
It's what are the standards and how is it conducted? How is it assessed and then how is it enforced?
Sure.
Or is the penalty just you have to shut down until it can be mitigated? You're zero.
Small but perfectly formed.
Okay. This has been fun. So let, let's move on to um, discussion township manager discussion relative to permitted uses.
What's that, Bob? They're all permitted?
Thanks, Joe. Thank you very much. I'll try to keep this short. Um, just before I get into that, just a couple of things on the data centers. It's interesting you mentioned about um, data centers have a shelf life. And the technology is gonna be phased out. However, cell towers, I remember my first cell tower that I was able to get located in a community back in nineteen ninety-one. They said cell towers are going away in the next ten years. They'll never see them. They're gonna go away. They're still building them here in two thousand twenty-five. They're not going anywhere. So it's those kind of things. Uh, one thing to caution too. And I guess I'm gonna say watch what you wish for. Because there are other uses looking at the Penhurst site. Which would be a disaster in the way of traffic, smells, all kinds of other operations. So I think keeping our eye on the ball is what you all are doing here. But also be aware, there are these other issues that are out there. Final thing I'll say on data centers is watch Harrisburg. Um, as other states have done, they have stripped local municipalities of any zoning. That's where you need to watch. Um, I was told this afternoon there is something working in Harrisburg that was introduced. To keep an eye on that because that may impact a lot of things that we're looking to do or try to protect the community from. Cause if that's, if those things are stripped from the community, then it's basically at the state level of how this gets done. So we don't have the ability to implement our standards on this. So that's my little spiel. The other thing I want to ask, and I've asked the solicitor and the um, board supervisors at the last meeting. I feel there's a huge hole in this community dealing with adult entertainment. We do not restrict that. Every day I'm worried about Haley getting some, something submitted that can go on this township. I'm asking Joe and I know Joe's wringing his hands saying, Bob, why did you bring it up? It, it is what it is. It's something that I'm asking Joe that he will put something together for the, introduce, introduce this at the July meeting. Thanks, Joe.
Yes.
And get this to the planning commission as soon as possible. Cause I, again, this is an area that whether it is right for this or it's not. You never want that to come in. Because then it will always hang with you. There was a community that I managed before I got there, it was allowed in. They reacted and tried to rush zoning through. It was illegal. It went in. It's a nightmare. It's a problem to enforce and they try to always push outside the boundaries of what they're in. I don't think it's appropriate for this community and we need to get out in front of that. Just as we are doing here with this data ordinance of what you're doing and your time and all the good questions that you've asked. So that's my big ask. Um, I was a big push on that and Joe has committed that he's gonna do that. And get that ready to go because it is
So Bob, Bob, don't we have something in our ordinance about this? Because I remember this coming up before, so there must be something in the
I think it came up in the ordinance committee.
It did.
No, I'm thinking about years ago when I was on the planning commission.
There, there's
Have we done a search on our ordinance for those words?
Did, go, I'll let you talk to it, Joe.
No, you go ahead. It's alright.
I just remembered.
We're, we're gonna cut at Bob's direction. It's become a very hot topic, rightfully so. Um, and we're gonna be bringing forward what is in the ordinance and what should be in the ordinance. Um, for both the board of supervisors to consider and then to, to give direction of the planning.
Okay, so there is something in there right now, something. I don't know.
Saying that whatever is there, we will go forward?
No, I see there's nothing that restricts where, where that can go and I'd rather prefer.
Say what Bob is saying?
That's it. That's it. That's why we paid Joe the big money uh, to do that. So, but again, I don't like to sugarcoat stuff and say this is where we're at and where we're that would be.
Support a question. I mean, I'm sensing a sense of urgency. Is, is there something imminent?
No, no, there isn't, but that one is
Well, that's good. I have to.
Two thousand two and the community that I went into that had one. Um, and every community had been in, that makes me nervous because again, it changes your whole dynamic of your community. Uh, to where airplanes are allowed to fly over and other things to help advertise. And actually we did pass a law though, that Hawaii actually instituted who went after a court case. So at least we can get that restricted out there too. It's all good.
I just wanna be very, there is no plan.
No, there is no plan.
There's no
No. No.
If you do, please let me know.
But I will say, in Joe's cringe, is we have had conversations with the business that is looking at Penhurst. That is something that we do not That's alright, Joe. Don't blame me. That we do not want there. It, it is not a good business and all the things we hear. Odors, traffic, all these other things, noise. There's your perfect poster child of what it would be. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's permitted use. So. Alright. Thank you very much and thanks for all you do too. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the pressure, Bob.
Okay, um, the final thing on the agenda, um, which I think we've got a lot of food for thought just from this meeting is topics for planning commission focus and discussion. Um, so this is something we talked about uh, at the last meeting and maybe at the meeting before. Um, but prior to this data center ordinance, um, when we didn't have anything going on. Um, we just didn't meet. And so the idea was to have something that we're working on to help push our ordinances forward and planning work in general. And we had come up with a bunch of different topics and um, I can dig up a list of those topics. I was not
I have it.
Excellent. So Elaine's got it. Um, why, why don't you read it off Elaine? What's on the list?
Um, so it goes like this. Uh, topic one. Review zoning ordinance for clarity and consistency with best practices and township values. There you go. Adult entertainment. Um, two, study potential updates to the zoning map to better align with existing conditions. And township pri- priorities. Three, update the comprehensive plan. Four, work with park and recs committee on a trail plan. I've lost, these aren't numbered, so I'll just say next. Ensure the planned submission requirements in the SADO. Reflect what we want to see submitted. Next, explore the benefits and logistics of entering into the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. Oh, that's it. Oh, no. Those are ideas. And then there are that's our, yeah, that's it.
And then at our meeting tonight, we, we heard about the woodland protection ordinances, which the EAC is looking at. The tree.
Well, not just, not just the woodlands, but the whole, the whole resource, natural resource.
Right. So, and then our comprehensive plan was adopted in twenty eighteen. You're supposed to update the, that every ten years. And I know there's many of us do not hold the comprehensive plan in high regard. And so, you know, it takes two years to update it, year and a half. So it, it could be time to start thinking about that too. Was it, I can't remember if that was, that was one of the things you've listed, but
Yes, it is.
Does anybody have any thoughts?
So I, I do. Um, first one, because of the last several discussions we've had at the board here. Um, you know, Penhurst has been a co, I've been here forty years. Penhurst has been a conversation all that time. And it all boils down to access. Is there a piece of work, and I don't know if there is, it might be outside our box, but so to speak. But is there a piece of work that we could do to actually say, look, what would be if you kind of blue skied it? What could be, would be the access options? That the township maybe could implement to improve access to Penhurst and then offer greater opportunity for a variety of different uses in that, that tract. Cause right now you know, that's, that's the bottleneck is how you get to it, right? So that was one. The other one was I was cleaning out old files and I came across this thing from the last time I was on the planning commission. It's a public meeting of two thousand and nine, uh, discussing the four twenty-two corridor. And it was done by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And it was all about the right, the light railway and then all the things that spurred from that. And mixed use and so forth. And I, again, I don't know if this could be part of the comprehensive plan that we could consider, but this was a very useful piece of work that went absolutely nowhere because of the Great Recession. Um, but there was a lot of energy about it in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine culminating this public meeting. And maybe is that something we should consider? Again, is it outside our box, but it's just something that struck me when I found this old document.
Did you say seven twenty-four or four twenty-two?
Four twenty-two, I'm sorry. Yeah, four twenty-two.
But we're in that corridor, right?
We're in that corridor. Yeah, seven twenty-four was part of it. And then the light railway running, it was the extension of the Northtown R six out to Redding, yeah. So it was just a thought.
That also is very important. Is that light rail, that's still in the planning, isn't it? Yeah, yes.
Planning for twenty-five years.
I know, but there's still look, I mean, that would make a big change here also. That's something that, I think that's what that was looking at. I mean, you know, it's like the main line. You have stops on public transit like that, then you're gonna get to get big change in your neighborhood.
It is being studied now. And it's kind of like closer than it's ever been. The stops would be in Phoenixville and Pottstown.
Oh, so not in Royusworth?
No.
Okay. Alright, well, that makes a big difference.
There's the rails to trails, back to rails program that they're trying to implement.
So, yeah.
Well, again, that, that could be part of our com- comprehensive plan conversation at least, you know? If we know, I mean, I didn't even know that it was still an active discussion, so that's great data point.
So if we were to initiate a comprehensive plan, I'd be, you know, looking for grants. Oh, sorry. If we were looking to initiate, uh, looking at a comp, starting the comprehensive plan process would be looking for a grant to pay for that in like Chester County or do they have that or?
Yes. I knew the township applied for Chester County grant um, for a different project. And I, I don't know if it was approved or not, but if it is, you can only have one of those grants at a time. So there's that. But I, I think that the idea of like doing something in preparation for the comprehensive plan, like some kind of like figuring out of things, background research. Sort of like bringing, bringing some of these plans that have been done in the past. Back to light and figuring out what's been implemented in them and what, what is still relevant? Who's working on what? Could be kind of valuable.
Yeah, something smaller than maybe to start off with just a topic. Uh, maybe there's some topic in there, uh, Lawson, that you could pick out, something like that. Just for the top, and I, and I, I see this, sometimes the planning commission doesn't even meet because there's nobody, no development coming in. So times like that, I think that it would be great if we had some subjects we could meet and discuss. Instead of, you know, be proactive rather than
So if I may, um, at the direction of the township manager and the board, um, we, my office has been asked to recreate the nineteen ninety-four plan, I believe it is. Um, kind of strip that back, the two, the two thousand and eighteen plan. Um, include seven twenty-four um, updates as, that are in the two thousand and eighteen plan, the things that are, that fit within the vision statement of the township and then bring that forward here in a Word document to discuss. So, um, that's the beginning of, I would call that comprehensive plan project. Um, and then there's a lot of other things that go back, but it would be potentially a process of repealing the existing plan. Reinstituting a revised nineteen ninety-four plan as, as one means of looking at the new comprehensive plan. So
I, that, I don't like that at all. And I will say that because like it's very against like the process of getting the input from the community, like you saying that just says like the solicitor is writing the comprehensive plan. From nineteen ninety-four when, you know, half of us didn't live here then. And some of us said, yeah, but lots of us didn't. And um, like, why, why would we do that process as opposed to the typical process of starting from like, hey, what do you guys think? What do we like about our community? What do we want to be different? And starting from that place rather than go, going back to nineteen ninety-six.
I, I think it was I think the concept of going backwards is actually going forward. In, in a very real way for this community based on the vision statement and the feedback that has been
I guess I'm just talking about the process. It, it, community planning is so process oriented and having it come from the solicitor just does not feel good.
Understood.
Well, maybe that's what we could have, just we could go and back, go back and look at that plan. Because from what I remember of that plan, it's a lot nicer than what we have. So maybe in the process of the, of us getting ideas or starting a new one, we, that would be our first task, go back, compare the two of them as they are right now, something concrete that we could look at.
That's, that's basically the direction I have been given.
So maybe there's something in that.
But, but to what end? I, I guess I, I would like to know, like, what would the desired outcome be?
I think that's the starting point for the discussion, for the community discussion. I think that, again, based on what I have been told, that the older plan is more in tune with what the community, um, has indicated they would like. And that way you're taking, I would call it the more, the better community fit plan, taking the pieces out of the 2018 plan that made sense along the 724 corridor. And then presenting that to you for really, that, that's, it's my handoff. It's not me drafting something. It's here. And based on that, have that community input, community outreach, um, and see where you go from there.
But we don't need to start from anywhere. Like, we don't need to have a starting point from 2018 or 1996. They can just start with the community outreach, the, hey, what do you think?
I understand what you're saying.
And also, like, why is our planner not doing this? Why is this coming from the solicitor? Like, that, this is what our planner's expertise is.
Well, that's true. I agree with you there that we should be involving the planner more in this, since that's called the comprehensive plan with a planning commission, you know?
I think, I think you're, oh, respectfully, I say this very respectfully, I am not creating anything. This is, this is taking two documents,
Looking at it.
melding them together, having our office perform some of the technical, not technical review, the actual technical, creating a Word document stuff, and then giving you something that you can revise, amend, do whatever you want with.
Um, I, I, I think that we do need, um, something to look at. We just can't say.
Oh, when you do a comprehensive plan, you still review other?
You review, yeah. So you can, we could start reviewing what we had, what we have, just to get an idea of where we are. That's all I'm saying. Right. And where do we want to go? That's.
But we don't need somebody to like assemble something to like meld things together. We could look at the old document, look at the 2018 document. It'd be great to get it up on the website.
Well, yeah, we would need the, the, the old plan. I don't, we would need, that's not up on the website. Yeah, someplace to, I mean, I see it as a starting point.
Maybe at the next meeting, we could have a discussion about the process of updating our comprehensive plan.
I just, I once went to a, a seminar, a couple day seminar on writing a comprehensive plan. It was a long time ago, so I don't remember much of it, but it was, um, it was a whole new approach to writing a comprehensive plan. I'm sure I could dig it up someplace. It was interesting. But yeah, you have to start somewhere. That's the thing. You have to know where you, you have to at least know what a comprehensive plan is, right? So.
So Rachel, are you thinking of just gathering background data so that when we eventually do a comprehensive plan, that we have like information that we can feed to a?
Let me create a format, more or less, right? You're just creating a format, heading one, two, and three, insert whatever here. You're creating the, the structure of the.
We're not reinventing a wheel of a comprehensive plan.
Correct. Right. And this is, that's essentially creating the headings and taking your old, the older plan, using it as a base, inputting some of the new plan into that that was not addressed in the old plan and saying, here is your starting point. And, and taking a look at it from there and getting the community feedback and what have you. It's, it's a way of shortening the process a bit. And also starting from what it appeared, again, based on what I've been told, that makes sense from the public perspective, following the mission statement.
Well, I do remember that the old plan was much better than the new plan. I do recall that. But I also understand what Rachel's saying. And so maybe there's some, but, you know, we have to have some kind of structure to start with, I guess.
Right. And the style of doing plans nowadays is to have an implementable plan where there's a couple, like a two or three or five, like, things you want to do, things you want to focus on. And like, that was not how things were done in 1996. And it was just like 100 different things that you might want to do in different topic areas. And I, I think we need the community, like, before we come up with like an outline even of what's in the plan, I think we need people to say, these are the top priorities that we want to focus our planning efforts on. Rather than just like have the like community facility section, transportation section, housing section. And like, taking a stab at the outline before you get that input just doesn't feel right.
Well, Rachel, you have experience in this. This is your job. So maybe, maybe you could give us some ideas where to start.
And also like the, there's, there's so much broader outreach that happens with comprehensive planning and like, there's certain people who show up at these meetings. There's certain people who show up at the Board of Supervisors meetings, and we're not hearing from everybody. We're, we're hearing from the people who show up.
Well, good luck on getting too many other people to show up.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think we can be more creative than we've been.
But don't, don't we need some form of structure to at least begin the conversation? That's always been my experience.
Like figuring out what, what's there, what planning work has been done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe the first step is if we could see, I mean, I haven't even looked at the existing comprehensive plan because everyone said it's absolute crap. So I didn't waste my time. So, um, I'm happy to take a look at it. I'm happy to take a look at the old plan and just get my thoughts together. If those can be, Haley, maybe you can email those to us. That'd be great. And then we can at least think about it and come with a more structured picture in our heads.
What is a comprehensive plan? Of course, the, our current, our current comprehensive plan is online. In the dark web.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's easier ways to get it to us. The, the point is that I think we, we all need to be informed and kind of be on the same page to begin the conversation. And then at least say, right, here's the one, two, three things we want to do as part of that. But what I'm hearing with this conversation is that for all the things that you read out, Elaine, comprehensive plan kind of is the thing that probably we need to take a look at first. Yeah. And then figure out where within that are the three things or four things we want to focus on.
Go ahead, Chris.
I think there's a middle way. And I think what Joe and the supervisors and the administration are doing is a resource document. And one of the things that was missing in 219 was, all right, what's our geology, guys? What about the Langatang? What is it called? The Langatang Formation? All right. And, you know, is that in the 19 plan? No. But does it have impacts on development? Yes. And what's, now, we have to change the history section because there was a 2000 and whatever inventory that our township participated with the Historic Preservation Office in Chester County, and that has to be completely gotten rid of. But there are really important sections that are what I would call foundational pieces. They're not the comprehensive planning process that you're talking about, Rachel, but it helps, I think, set a scene for who, who are we on a basic level? That's important for everyone to understand because it was totally never discussed in the 19 plan. You had a map. They threw a map at you. Well, okay. Well, what does that map really mean? Yeah, it's a pretty map, but in the 94 plan, they really talked about all of the foundational pieces of who is East Vinson? What is it on a scientific level? What is it on a historical level? And I think that's what they're trying to give you, not to interpret or interrupt a real comprehensive planning process. So I hope we can give them a little grace because I think they're doing a noble effort to bring information that's been lost. And that's, will inform the future comprehensive plan because it has taught me about the township. I mean, I was here for a while, you know, 30 some odd years and got involved at a lot of levels. But I think that this helps ground us in a way that, uh, we haven't seen this kind of data in a while, and it's, it's informative.
So it's just bringing some of the data, but it's not creating a.
It's not a strategy. It's not a strategy and it's not a focus. It's really foundational information.
And I just don't understand why seeing the actual plan wouldn't have the same impact.
Well, I think what, uh, Joe is trying to tell you is that there's some good stuff in the 19 that he's trying to bring forward. So it just gives you a starting point to understand who are we? That's it. It doesn't have anything to do with any, any strategy. For example, I mean, I'm going to kick the can on the open space plan. That's a piece of crap. I'll use the word, you know? We certainly in the Open Space Committee have come up with a very comprehensive, wonderful open space strategy for our township. And it certainly is not a couple of projects that we were going to do in year six. Give me a break. That's what 19 plan wanted. You know, open space preservation wasn't even front and forward. So I think let's give some grace and see what this document, which will be a foundational document, not a strategy, not a comprehensive planning process at all, just to give you base information. And, you know, hey, you know how to do planning. I do too. And so do a lot of people up here because that's what we've done professionally in our lives. So I think that's the baton that will be handed to you. They're not taking it away from you. I hope that helps clarify.
I think, um, it would be nice if we could see the plan, all of us, the residents, the people on the committee, and then it certainly will be a bonus to have a, put it, have it put together by somebody that's logical. I think we, I think there's a middle ground. But I would like to see it available.
Yeah. So, um, it's 10-03. I think that it sounds like we all collectively would like to see this 1996 plan. And, um, so however the township thinks it can be made available, um, that's possible. That would be great. And that of the things that we talked about, working on the comprehensive plan seems to rise to the top of things that we think would be valuable to do. So I guess we would need the, um, sort of blessing of the Board of Supervisors to be able to really start talking about it and working on it in earnest. But it also sounds like it's something that they, is very much on their radar. Does that sound right? Okay. Okay. Um, any other public comment? Go ahead.
A judge going to be working on that Monica Scriber Valley Creek Lane. I just wanted to bring up, um, you know, having some sort of a water study done and also considering, um, requiring recycled water, wastewater and or gray water, whatever they call it versus potable water, because I didn't realize this, but I just watched the video on a, a person that brought up the point that with the droughts. And we had that last summer. I mean, I don't know how many other summers we've had it. I know last summer was bad. Who gets your potable water? Do the residents get it? Or does the data center get it? Because the data center needs to keep running. So I thought that was a really important question. So having some sort of a water study done as part of the requirement, also having, um, the transmission lines. We never talked about that. Although somebody brought up a really good, important, uh, point about not putting it into certain lands, certain preserved lands or parks or residence homes. There's a buzz and hum that goes with transmission lines too. So we have to be aware of that EMF, um, as part of this, um, Leeds Energy Savings. That's, I know you were talking about tiers with different, uh, levels of data centers, but my understanding is there are tier fours like the, the best, most energy efficient, um, equipment and things like that.
Not necessarily.
Is there two different things or is it?
The tiers relates to the downtime.
It's purely based on reliability of the data center.
So it doesn't have to do with, uh, energy efficiency. So Leeds would do that then?
It's, it's, Leeds is a completely separate organization. The, the data tiers are purely reliability. And it's based on how long they shut off for a year or in, in a year.
Okay. The, the reason I'm bringing it up is because in my research, the diesel generator impacts. My research says that these generators should be treated as having the potential to be used as power plants. And so that's something we should be looking at and putting into this regulation that, I mean, do you want to? And how many power plants could they put in? I don't know. We don't have anything about that. But I just found it. All data center buildings must be constructed to lead their gold standards for building designs. I don't know if we want to incorporate that. We've been talking about leads in the EVA for quite a while now. I mean, the EAC, sorry. Uh, water impact study, I already talked about electrical, um, grid impact study. The telecommunication tower in our ordinance, is that the same as a cell tower?
Yes.
Does, does that have that verbiage in there? Something, I don't know if we could collaborate with the EAC or not, or I don't know, the committees I've seen brought up is Clean Economy Act. Does Pennsylvania have a Clean Economy Act? Does Chester County?
I've never heard of that.
So that would be something that a lot of, uh, organizations or, you know, citizen organizations and townships are looking at with data centers. Um, clean, uh, sorry, my, I'm getting a shadow here. Is there a climate action committee? Energy Climate Action Plan for Pennsylvania?
Yes.
So that's something, what does that say with, with data center use? I, I don't know. I didn't know if we had it or not. I'm almost done. Oh, is there a joint, and this is for you, Joe, is there a joint Legislative Audit Review Commission?
I'm not even sure for, for a local, not, not for a local government, not for us.
For us, the study of the impact of data centers. I found that and I just didn't know if that's.
I'm not aware of that. I mean, there's a, there's all kinds of organizations at federal levels, but at a local level, I can tell you, we don't have that.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your time and letting me comment. Thank you.
Couldn't resist Dana Shifon, our stone circle, um, on the zoning. Joe, billboards. East Pike Lynn, we don't want a billboard like East Pike Lynn. I know I talked to Joe about that. So we already have some, but we don't want something like that.
That's correct.
So I know there was talk about looking at that and I'll just put a plug in for that. And the other zoning is the Natural Resource Protection Overlay. And I know that the data center, this is like the number one priority and it's, it's, it's big. It's a big nugget. But could we take an approach with the Natural Resource Protection zoning that we at least look at the definitions we have now around things like woodlands, headwater streams, zero water streams, things that we talked about at the, with the EAC and the township? Could we have the planner work and look at the definitions to shore those up? And then take on the Natural Resource Protection Overlay as a bigger project. So this would feed into that. It wouldn't be wasted time. But it's something I, I want to talk to Bob about more. Um, but the EAC felt that that might be a good approach because we are at risk with some of those things right now as new development is coming in. We don't want to wait for the whole rewrite to happen. So, um, and then on the data centers, East Whiteland, I brought this up at the last meeting, but. East Whiteland, I brought this up at the last meeting, but it, I don't see any of it reflected. So I'll just talk about it again. They're putting in a basement. They, it's going to be a two-story building with a basement specifically designed to accommodate cooling and utility equipment, which helps to reduce the overall building mass and minimize its visual impact. The final design includes a smaller building footprint to decrease impervious surface coverage, addressing stormwater management concerns. So is that something as we're looking at incentivizing and allowing them to build bigger, you know, outside of TDRs, what about a basement? Um, and maybe East Pike lane. I mean, I don't, East Whiteland. It just got approved in August of last year, so I don't think that it's even under construction yet, but I wanted to point that out. And as far as the community benefit agreements, Joe, where would that fall? Would that be part of conditional use? Or do, could we put that in the zoning to say, we're going to have one? And then we would flesh all that out during the conditional use hearings.
I, I think that's probably something that is part of conditional use process, not in the ordinance itself, because they oftentimes involve a community organization, not the township per se.
Okay.
It, it's, it's in this, and again, without getting into too much detail, it's in this very strange, almost contract zoning ma- in, you know, bucket, and we just have to be very careful about making sure that we don't get into contract zoning itself.
Okay. Okay. And then I, I just agree with how this meeting got kicked off and I appreciate the commission members talking about the technical side of this. I mean, some of us have, I mean, we've been reading for months and it's just so technical. And it's like, what do you even bring to a meeting like this to have some sort of impact? You know, it's such a specific thing. Um, so I think that our concern is just that the, the experts, you know, to the extent we can have data center experts, we've got great engineers, planners, stormwater engineers, but to have the data center specific experts be in here, I think is so important. And I think it, it is really challenging to make any, you know, we, we're just reading as much as we can, but to really get this right, we've got to have the experts. Um, oh, the last thing, and I sent it to Bob and maybe he can send it to all of you. There's, um, this concept of green data centers and what should be included in those and all the different areas that would probably fall under the environmental impact. So that's something that, you know, he can probably send on. It would be worthwhile, I think, for our expert team to look at as well. Thanks for everything. Great job.
Any other public comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I motioned that when you heard. All set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody for coming.